I think the only other documents that we have would be documents that I mentioned on the computer, but I think they are probably blowups of good pictures of previously submitted documents. Is that correct?
That's correct. I brought another exhibit which is essentially a blowup of the tax map that's on the cover sheet. If, just for, for reference to the board and public, because the size of the tax that's on the cover sheet is kind of hard to view. We did have a discussion on that. This is actually just a blowup of that tax map sheet with a little bit of lost.
Why don't we mark that?
As A six.
Would you be so kind to mark that as A six on the bottom right? Put it A eight.
The other job, your site plan. Site plan is simply the same site plan she was in this package.
Mr. Renter, by whom are you employed?
By dynamic engineering consultants.
And what capacity?
I'm a principal and partner of the firm, and I oversee preparation site plans for commercial and residential developments. I'm a, excepted as an expert in business between, I would say, upwards of fifty to sixty boards throughout the district.
Thank you, Scott. We accept your interest. Thank you. Mr. Renter, are, did you become familiar with the lot one oh five, lot twelve, that being a piece of property owned by the owner of the site?
Yes.
Could you give the board a brief description of the property?
Certainly. The, the property has a multi-use or a commercial and residential mixed use building on it. Commercial use on the first floor and residential apartments on the other floors. It's located on a, so, a non-performing lot as far as lots dimensions. What I mean by that is that the existing lot, as it's been developing, and used over, I'd say several decades, is smaller than the zoning dimensions and criteria set forth by the C P D. And it's, the entire frontage of the lot, as it runs on Main Street, is occupied by the building itself. There's no access to the rear of the property from Main Street or from any other right of way or any other available property. So the rear portion of the property, which does not have any structure or any building on it, is completely, say, landlocked from access. So in other words, in order to maintain and, and operate the grounds of the rear of the property, it requires access through the first floor of the building to get to that location.
Okay. So before I get to the grounds of mainness, go along if you want to. I'd like to direct you through page three of your submission to the board, and I'd like you to just briefly run them through the C P D one zone, as to what the requirements of the zone and what the existing as-built, or dimensions of the lot is.
The required minimum lot area for the zone is seventy-five hundred square feet, and the existing lot is six thousand six hundred eighty square feet. The minimum lot width requirement is fifty feet, and the existing lot width is only thirty-six point one six feet.
And that is on the Main Street?
That's correct. That coincides also with the minimum lot frontage requirement of fifty feet, and similarly thirty-six point one six foot of frontage.
What is the front yard setback?
The minimum front yard setback required is zero feet, and the existing condition is zero feet. The building fronts on the right way of Main Street. The rear yard setback requirement is twenty-five feet, and fifty-four feet is the existing structure. The side yard setback is ten feet required. That's a specific requirement for properties that are adjacent to residential zones. The way the, the borough's ordinance reads, it has increased setbacks for properties that are, are up flooding the residential zone, but it doesn't say where those setbacks should be applied. The only reason I mention that is we do have a residential zone that we are up but at the rear of the property, only per se about eight or ten feet. But because we are a property that abuts a residential zone, all of our, all of our side yard and rear yard setbacks are increased, even though they're not in that location. So the side yard requirement along our south and northern boundary, which are nowhere near the residential area, is required to be a ten-foot setback, as opposed to zero-foot setback that would be required if there were no residential zone above. So with that said, both the minimum side yard and combined side yard setbacks require ten and twenty feet respectively, or each zero, and those are existing conditions of these. There's a lot shape requirement of forty-five feet. It's really a, a lot shape and dimension requirement, and that similarly is less than the forty-five feet in existing condition. Minimum, maximum building height is forty-five feet for stories, and this, this structure's less than forty-five feet, and it's only three stories. And the maximum lot coverage allowable for buildings is eighty percent, and the existing conditions are thirty-nine point three percent. The minimum landscape area required is ten percent, and that's exceeded in existing conditions and in the conditions that we'll discuss throughout at sixteen percent. The maximum pervious surface is one hundred percent, and we are within that requirement at eighty-three point seven percent. And the maximum floor area is an E two, certainly less than that two. And the minimum buffer width to residential is twenty-five feet, and it's really a relief that we're past a four-point, or frozen four-point. And that has to do with the buffer that's required by ordinance to that area of the perimeter of the site that's adjacent to residential.
Now, your understanding of this application is that the renter is back before this, or his net application before this board based upon him installing pavers and two drainage dry wells in the rear of the lot. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
And with your discussion with Mr. Renter, you learned that this was for maintenance purposes, as there was no access to the rear structure as configured. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, please take the board through what your observations were, your inspection of improvements that were made.
What I observed was the, the access to the rear of the site from the first floor is predominantly through a pair of French doors at the, at the eastern face of the southern portion of the building. Right now, that, that, that tenant inside is a restaurant. That's partly the area of the restaurant. That's the, the access that would be utilized for maintenance of the area at the rear of the building. The first measure, proceed to the east from the rear of the building, the, there's existing dated existing pavers that had been installed previously to approximately the job and property line. So this whole area is existing pavers and here. And then in the rear of the, of the property are newer pavers that were recently installed and really a subject of this application. There's a very large locust tree I believe here, probably the largest locust tree I've ever seen. It's probably got a diameter of about, I would say, thirty, thirty-six inches, and they have a significant planter box around it. I would say the planter box is probably about twenty to twenty-five feet diameter around that tree. That's pretty much reserved in the backyard. So all the new pavers were put in, in a square rectangular fashion, the circular planter for a lot of locations in the middle. And there's a perimeter of about four to five feet of landscape bed around the perimeter of the square paver area, lined by a six-foot PVC solid vinyl fence.
And did you have an opportunity to review the dry well that was installed?
I saw them from, from above grid. There's several grates. There's a small trench drain grate near the trench doors at the, at the back of the building. There's another access from the rear portion of the building out into the patio area. There's another trench drain there. And then out in the new paver area, there's two, two trench drain, or two drain locations, and I understand that the seepage pits were installed underneath those locations. Also, the roof leaders that come from the gutters and drainage for the roof are tied into, see where the downspouts tie into that collection system, and that's all connected into the, into seepage area.
Do they, do the dry wells appear to be adequate for the size of the property?
I didn't have an opportunity to review the actual size of the dry wells, but after looking at the previous conditions, the roof leaders were not tied into any drainage system. They just splashed down onto the rear of the property and onto, onto the paver areas that were previously existing. The, the fact that the applicant is taking the time to connect roof leaders into the dry wells and also to collect, the runoff from the paver area into the dry wells was certainly an improvement over the conditions where there was no drainage structures at all.
Now, can you please address for the, the board, did you have an opportunity to review the engineer, review letters, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I believe on page, page two discusses a requirement of a twenty-five foot landscape buffer where four point one feet is provided. Do you see that?
That's correct.
Could you please discuss that, your feeling thereon regarding the size of this property's location, and how it fits within the downtown area of Borough of Delmar?
Certainly. The buffer requirement is twenty-five foot buffer to residential, residentially zoned properties. For this particular site, as I mentioned before, there's only about a ten-foot wide or ten-foot long property line that is adjacent to the R seventy-five zone. The rest of our property is adjacent to commercial properties. So for this eight to nine feet, ten-foot long segment, we apply a twenty-five foot buffer to that line, and that's how you would apply the buffer from, as the ordinance describes. So that buffer is shown as a dashed line that continues north-south on our southern property line, and it intersects the planter on a, on a circular portion because it still hasn't maintained property, a, a buffer to the corner. So it's, it's a quarter of a circle and then, and then a straight line, and that's the buffer you see on your planter. According to the ordinance, there shouldn't be any structures or pavements within that area adjacent to the residential zone. Now, for this property, the adjacent properties all around are all commercial properties. In fact, our adjacent property to the northeast is also a commercial property, which is paved pretty much right up to the property line. So we're really surrounded by pavements that are commercial properties, with the exception of this very small piece.
Okay. I'd like to slow you down a bit. I, I know you're, you're letting it out, but I just want you to describe the, the face that faces Main Street. How would you like to refer to that? Would you describe that as the westerly surface? All right, so that is to the west, and the property to the south. Describe what that southerly property is. Is that a commercial piece of property?
It's a commercial piece of property.
Will you refer to it by lot and block, just regardless of your map?
Thank you.
It's a lot curbside, block number.
So from your perspective, would the, the infletability of a twenty-five foot buffer relative to that property line to the south, which if you were referred to in your survey, if I had a camera on my survey, like it's being telegraphed, would run a distance of one hundred and fifty feet?
That's correct.
It would be inadmissible, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then on the northerly face, if you were to refer to that lot, lot number in the system?
Lot eleven. Lot one oh five.
Okay.
And the distance to that property line is one hundred feet.
And what type of property is that?
That's also commercial.
And would the twenty-five foot buffer be applicable there too?
No, sir.
And then what about to the east, lot number eight?
That's also a commercial use.
Would the twenty-five foot buffer be applicable there too?
No, sir.
Now, is it a lot eastbound, would it be one applicable residential piece of property?
That's correct.
And that comes along the sixty-foot lot line?
That's correct. It's a portion of that sixty-foot rear lot.
And when you scale that sixty-foot lot line, it was approximately eight feet, you're indicating would be applicable?
That's correct.
To that. Now, then, please comment on your position as to the sufficiency of the buffer that has been provided by Mr. Renter. These are the section by my, section forty dash eight point four, support E, support two. Last line says, "Intense developments when building design and siding do not provide privacy to municipal agency may require landscaping, fencing, or walls to provide privacy, and screen dwelling units can increase time on the sufficiency of the proposal of Mr. Renter thereto."
Certainly. This application really falls right into that requirement of the ordinance that Mr. Scheckers just read. There's, at this location, there's existing fencing on all the adjacent properties to really provide themselves with concealed property for their own use. And similarly, the renters have installed six-foot vinyl solid PVC fence along their property line that helps, that provides that buffer and meets that requirement of the ordinance. In addition, there's four-foot landscape bed along this patio area to, to, to provide additional landscaping, this is runoff, and certainly meet that requirement of the ordinance. This location within Delmar's certainly fits that specific requirement, that specific guidance of the ordinance, in that it's densely populated. The lots, our lot as well as our surrounding lots, are majority undersized, so the availability of property to provide the buffers adjacent to pieces is not always sufficient in these areas.
I want to take you through the engineer report by my, you have your commentary report. On page three, we have discussed now the proposed use of the rear of the property thing, just simply favored. You're not, that way you indicated in my preamble, you're not discussing outdoor dining. Discuss number two, the landscape buffer, correct?
That's correct.
Number three, the engineer requests comment on, I'm writing, he directs, and lighting for patron, but we're not proposing this as a patron area, is that correct?
That's correct.
Number four discusses outdoor tables and seating, if opposed, we're not proposing that, correct?
That's correct.
Number five says we are seeking approval for previously installed pavers and other amenities, correct? And that's what we have addressed, is that correct?
That's correct.
Number six, not applicable as we are not increasing parking demands because we're not seeking to increase any capacity, is that correct?
That's correct.
We are not providing lighting details, is that correct, according to this application?
That's correct.
You've discussed drainage impact, correct, for number eight?
Yes.
Engineer notes there were pipes tapped off for future, said rating. Can you comment on that in event there was additional dry wells or drainage installed? Comment on that.
The applicant in installing the dry wells and the piping left stubs for future connections if he chose to install another drainage here or there. So just as an open, an extra stub on the pipe is allowed future connection if he felt another drainage.
Comment number ten addresses outdoor dining, which did not be applied for, correct? Number eleven addresses waste management, recycling, and refuse handling. We're not the operator of the restaurants, is that correct?
That's correct.
You're familiar with negatively positive criteria through your fifty different board appearances for variance grant, is that correct?
Yes.
Have you reviewed this application for installation of drainage and pavers for the rear of such a lot regarding whether there's, whether there's negative impacts for pavers and increased drainage on this property regarding and surrounding properties within this neighborhood?
Yes, I reviewed it, and I find that the, the improved state of the site is an improvement on drainage conditions along the street.
Do you find any negative impacts from this type of improvement to the site to the surrounding property?
No, I don't.
Do you find positive benefits to this property and its surrounding property to the goal of these improvements?
Yes, I do.
What are they?
The drainage improvements of the seepage pits to collect runoff, and most importantly, the rooftops, which previously just came down to downspouts. And then secondly, to the general area of the rear of the property. But because of difficulty in maintenance of the rear of property, it's difficult to maintain any kind of significant landscape there. So you don't have a very good runoff numbers, runoff coefficients that you can see with, say, lawn areas or with dower areas. So the, the change from those conditions to the proposed conditions where the rooftops and the patio area is covered by seepage pits is certainly an improvement. The seepage pits have been created for the majority to collect the runoff from the, from the patios. And I think one of the important things is that the applicant's taken the time to make an aesthetic improvement to their site where they're maintaining the, the large locust tree, which is really probably one of the only trees of its size, I would say, within a great distance, but especially from the surrounding properties. And they maintain that on the site by, by dedicating that large planter to it. So I think that's certainly an improvement to the condition of the site and also.
Notwithstanding that they are within the impervious coverage requirement and that they are within the minimum landscape required areas, are you familiar with that, that adjacent properties also have significant hardscapes in the rear yards of adjacent properties as well?
Certainly, I would say majority of the commercial properties along this, in this area are for the most part urban services.
Have nothing urban, is that clear?
The language is clear.
No, it's clear.
Question by board. If it's, if it's not for restaurant use, what is, what is the purpose of the penny?
The, you want me to have the attorney's test, is that correct?
No.
Do you need to have complete evidence?
Okay. I can provide either through the engineer or I could have Mr. Renter's warning to provide, that's the one. Mr. Renter, why don't you?
Yes, sir.
And what was your purpose in installing the pavers and the drainage pits in the rear of this property?
To create a maintenance-free property line because first purchased it with its older well and additional access to the backyard. It's a landmark, putting pavers in in a certain way, it's an improvement, and also more dangerous for, for.
Mr. Renter, can you tell me how long have the seepage pits are?
The pits have like twenty tons of ground in each pit. Inside of the pit, there's a drainage well, carried about seventy-five gallons of water. And the problem is these pits are interlocked with each other. So straight drainage, flushing drainage, go to represent a, a large cavern, which is leaching constantly. There's upper and lower leaching pipes connected to both dry well pits, so you've total like forty, forty tons of ground. And what we did inside the building was we put a some pump that, under, under construction, so that there was a hot water table towards the front of the building and towards the back, so that when we pump the water underground, the water from the roof line, or underground set of, on, on array, if the water table rises, it pumps it out to the street. So we have that already in code.
Bill, do you know if the restaurateur has any plans for expanding his restaurant to outdoor dining?
I have no clue.
You have no clue? And if he asks you, if you being the owner said he wanted to do that, how would you answer?
I would say no, it would be cool.
So when you paved over, you had no intention in the future of this expanding to outdoor dining?
The restaurant, it could have been a restaurant, it could have been a bank, it could have been retail. What I found when I, when I first purchased it was overgrown, like I said, disarrayed, and I probably could develop a lot of properties and commercial, commercial property, but that's, that is a maintenance-free product in fact, especially if you're a landmark.
As the owner, would you be able to say no to the restaurateur about the outdoor dining area?
I don't know, but I'd be able to say that. I don't know what my legal rights are.
As the owner? Have you spoken to the restaurateur about what his future plans might be?
What, the restaurateur meaning who?
I guess Mr. Toolpano.
Well, he's not the restaurateur, he's just part of the restaurant.
Okay.
We didn't talk about the, the outside dining, the share at all.
Never?
The inside, I mean, the outside and the front, yes, that, that's been approved in his, in his application. There's no application for outside dining in the rear. I, I, I put these pavers in to make a maintenance product, maintenance-free product, and we've all came to see the site, and of course, some of you, some of you are going to visit. It's done with, it's done very well, and it's going to be a good product out there.
Mr. Renter? From the, from the, you mentioned you just put the pavers back there to beautify the area, make it maintenance-free. If this board were to approve your application, would you be willing to accept the fact that you couldn't have dining back there?
I couldn't, I couldn't say that, I don't know what my legal rights are for that.
Anyone else? Mr. Corvus?
We designed the drainage system. We put in a drainage system. We're not for your license dry wells or, we have the tech, we have the technology paperwork from Clayton Block. We put them in in many homes, a couple in, in Spring Lake. And it worked. And it depends on how, how large a property is and how many, how many dry wells can be installed, but it helps the drainage problem in private residence and commercial. We have a lot, we have a lot of land back there. We have the opportunity to tour, far enough away from each other, so you can start leaching, you know, together without, without filling up your canisters. And so far, you know, we had some heavy rains, Main Street was flooded, and I have some house doors in my backyard, sure it models, but it's, it's, it's done right.
The, the reason of my question is there dining?
The reason my question is there dining is based on, are there five, are there not any documentation about?
No.
Just the purpose of the record, if I could do this, that's what I'm asking. Do you have any drainage calculations?
I do not.
Drainage calculations available?
Yeah, I can go, I can get the dry well systems and the tonnage of gravel and I could put, I could put the drainage capacity on gallons in open canisters to see how fast the leachings. I'm sure Scott probably took a picture that was under construction, she saw that, she saw the pits, they were very large, she called the zoning on me because she was wondering, you know, what I was doing, these big holes, this was a recent renovation. That's all the dry wells. I got a call from the zoning officer, yes, what I was doing, told him I was building dry wells, I guess the nift was allowed, if they're not, I'll just close them up. I'm going to put in a drainage system back here. And he says, you're about to put dry wells in your backyard. So we tended to develop them like we usually do, the way, the way it works. And I get the documentation now.
Mr. Chairman, I simply request that the applicant's engineer provide those calculations to demonstrate the adequate capacity of the system, in view of respect to Mr. Renner.
Do you have any additional information?
No objection.
Again, any questions from the board?
I do have one question, I was all around that topic, is, is there an overflow mechanism from the roof layers, perhaps this is for you or your engineer? Is there an overflow with roof layers exit or what happens if this?
What happens is the, the dry wells, if they ever fill up, which we never saw it on bottom order, they're certainly working, they're leaching properly as we calculated. But like I said, I put it, as you, as you pump water underground, the water table starts rising, we put a, a sun pump. And if the water table rises, it'll be pumped out to the street on main street. So the top, the top pipe, dry wells have different cavities for different pipes, all the heights, so as you, as you connect them, you have your top pipe for your overflow. So the top pipe will run, run across, across the, both, both dry wells connecting. And if it feels that it's, it's going to overflow, it all raises the water table and it'll, and it'll all start pumping out from the sun pump out to, out to the front, front of the building.
Where's the building?
It's all through PVC pipe through your building.
They could probably give a little more information on that.
Yeah, well, the thing is, any, any building that I've developed, I, I put some pumps in for the water table to rise, to right by the main street. So any, any homes or anything like that, I have some pumps being installed in any of my properties.
Did you want to explain what it was? Was it just improved? Or I could die from the patient, you didn't hear it satisfied, decided it's fine with the drain? I don't think it's something we can't.
No.
Mr. Eas, any else?
No, it's fine. I did have questions for the, for the engineer, Mr. Do you have any conclusions? Sure, this is a good one.
Absolutely. I've been sworn by, I discussed the buffer area required by ordinance to the commercial zone. We agreed with the investment portion of the footnote, the schedule of our commercial uses. There's also a footnote section as commercial uses which discusses, again, it uses the twenty-five foot, but it said the twenty-five foot rear yard, not only to commercial uses, but also, excuse me, not only to residential uses, but also residential zones. So you provide a twenty-five foot setback to the use for zone?
For, for the setback, yes. Yes, the, the rear yard setback is fifty-four feet to the building.
What is your interpretation of the setback foot versus what the buffer requires?
The setback would be through a structure. The buffer requirement is for improvements, the buffer board is built out of, if you use the buffers, the pervious surfaces, patio surfaces are not.
So is the, because the patio surfaces were doing the buffer, that is the issue there?
That's my understanding. Okay, this point, I'm sorry, Porte, go ahead.
So my, so what he's looking for today is a, what's that, twenty-five radius, a twenty-five foot radius buffer?
Is that the answer?
Yeah. Is that what you're asking for?
We're requesting relief from the buffer requirement, where twenty-five feet is required and four points worth of heat is proposed. So although that radius is shown on the plans, that's a required buffer, but the actual buffer to that residence, again, just along this eight feet, is four point one. So for this section of the, of the property, we're required to have this twenty-five foot buffer.
And you don't have?
And we don't have it. The relief that we're seeking is instead of twenty-five feet, we have four point one feet, as well as the landscape areas, the landscape plantings that will be there, the six-foot final fence that's there, all providing buffer for separation of uses. I think those refer to exhibit A six. This is just a blow up of the tax map, map that's on the cover sheet of the plan, but I think it kind of helps it explain the circumstances of the adjacent residential use in residential zone. The applicant's property is labeled PIQ property questioned in the middle of the map. Our orientation is now north, south, so north is up, south is down. The property in its entirety is shaded correctly, this is again the applicant's property. And going along the rear of the property, you'll see a thick dashed line that makes a jog at the end of the property. That line is the boundary between the R seventy-five zone and the CBD one zone. So that line, all properties adjacent to that line have to have as well. And what I wanted to show to you, and what I've highlighted in yellow, is lot eighteen, lot one oh five, is the property in the residential zone that we are adjacent to. So for the eight feet along our rear property where we're adjacent to the residential zone, that's lot eighteen. Lot eighteen is approximately twenty-five feet wide, eight feet of that adjacent to our parcel all the way in that. And it's a flag shaped lot or an L shaped shaped lot. You'll notice there's no residential uses in that, anywhere in that area on that property. The residential use is up on Eleventh Avenue, where it faces Eleventh Avenue like all the other residences doing that property. The L shaped lot is not fenced off and the L flag illuminated, a lot of times these pieces get lost from lots, people don't even own them. But the, the owner has maintained it, he does have a fence around it, but he's had those structures back here, I think we have a garden. But you can see that between the residence and our property are two other lots that are actually between our use and our property, this applicant's property, and, and the residence on lot eighteen. So not only do we have a very small area of our lot that's actually adjacent to the residential zone, but the residential use is far removed from that area or that location of the lot.
When you say residential use, what do you mean by?
I'm sorry, residential structure.
Residential structure, but they, they can still use their backyard.
That, that's correct, they can use their backyard, in fact, they can use their backyard today the same way they always use it. In fact, if you look at lot eight on Tenth Avenue, which is a commercially zoned property like ours, actually has a structure in the rear of the property and is predominantly tamed up to the property. They are adjacent to that for seventy-five feet. They have that seventy-five foot commercial use on the other side of the fence and have always had it without any buffer and are enjoying the property the way they are right now. We are, we are only adjacent by eight feet. That, that twenty-five foot buffer, although it looks good, it looks large when you draw it and draw a radius around this point, but this area is not adjacent, we're just forced to draw the line of that. It's only eight feet that's adjacent to the residential zone. This eight feet is the only part that's residential. From this property, to even consider impact from this portion of the required buffer, has to go across another parcel that's already commercial built up. It's just the way we're forced to draw it into the buffer.
I just don't understand the reason why you're here. I don't understand why, for that twenty-five feet radius, why that couldn't have been planned out so that you, we wouldn't be here today. In other words, why was that paved and why wasn't that kept in the situation that a buffer requires?
Mr. Renner committed the direct statement of stating my next statement. He proceeded thinking that he was permitted to do this, improvement on his property. When he consulted with some borough officials, they correctly told him that the pervious requirement, maximum pervious requirement was a hundred percent. So he knew he was going to exceed a hundred percent. He, he thought, or and he didn't speak for himself, but he, his understanding was that he meant the pervious requirement, he wasn't, he didn't understand the buffer requirement. So that didn't get raised until after the construction, it's only an offset. If, if that item had been, had been raised at that time to him, he would have either had the decision to pack the proposed pavers or made application for that, for, for, for the, for the, for the buffer.
Now, certainly I ask you a question, if this application is denied, what's the consequence on the property that exists now?
Exactly, they have to compile the buffer requirements to the audience, to prepare this, they have to, this is the only possible. They, they can make an application for their local buffer, but in my opinion, if you got it by any year, paper material, not the buffer, you should not use a buffer, so you require by individual. If you, if you agree with the applicant's presentation, the consensus of the required to be that area of the buffer, you have to remove those papers. First, we used to let an idea of a structure, I can remove them, but I do, I don't know the surface structures, but having to remove, you have to, they would sound that area, they would be in the barriers to that.
The applicant's concern, why, the reasoning behind improvements would be that that would increase square footage that you have to have some sort of maintenance on from a landscape, that, and accessing the rear of the building.
Are you allowed shrubs in that bucket area?
Yes.
So the shrubs could be planted instead of pavers?
Sure, it would just be an increase in the area. Any else?
Questions from, questions from members of the audience on Mr. Scheich's presentation? Simply question, questions to your, to the members, if anybody has it, if appropriate, and say publicly, what's the other policy?
Any questions for the applicant, for the applicant's witness, for the public? Any, as you guys are asking? Let me clarify something, while Mr. Scheich is speaking later on, after you present your, your, your presentation.
This is just a question.
It's just definitely a question of the, of the applicant and of, of your presentation if yours finished later on, but we will have a public comment to you later, this is strictly questions.
I'm sorry, I did not catch the, the last sentence.
Doctor D.
Doctor D.
Doctor D.
Doctor D.
D U U T H E.
Doctor D. I'll listen to your testimony, I have some questions with regards to the plans you submitted, and I'd enjoy your attention to the citizens on the board, which I think is the third page of the site plan. You have got that before you?
Yes.
My first question is, you're familiar with the property, are you about?
Yes.
And you're familiar with that property as presented in your remarks?
Yes.
Probably your remarks.
I can answer, yes.
Well, you're aware the fact that there is a bank, a restaurant, and a brewery that has itself.
Are you still asking the first question?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, you know the date that you submitted this application to the board approximately? Was it in the last month?
Yes.
Okay, now, in your plan, when you identified the building, you referred to it as a three-story frame and basement, stores and apartments, now that's incorrect.
That notes an observation by the surveyor, I'm sorry, Raggin Land Surveying, Robert M. Raggin, New Jersey Professional Land Surveyor, license number three eight nine seven seven. Mr. Raggin did the land survey for this property representing the conditions as dated April fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, which we referenced into our site plan sheet three of three dated April seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. Notice in our general notes and reference, the first item one is a reference to that same survey.
That's fine, but when you submitted this package to the board, which was renewed, and when the survey was performed, that was not in fact a building that is being occupied as its store or store, or rather it's being occupied as a restaurant.
I'll take the word for it.
Well, I mean, I'm not fencing you, but when you submitted this application to the board, along with the documents, the factory is being stored, that was incorrect.
Mr. Gazarski, I.
I'm going to object. I'm just going to object on the relevance, Mr. Kovac, at this point. I think, I think we're going to get into this, this argument about restaurant relevance. I understand Mr. Gazarski's point from his, his objection letters that you provided up to provide to me, but I think we need a clarification going forward. It's very, very clear this is not a restaurant application, we're not representing a restaurateur, we're not attempting to expand a use. This is simply a, an application regarding the variance or the buffer and the paper that Mr. Renner apparently placed unknowingly regarding this surface paper application.
Mr. Gazarski, your response?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Gazarski, your response?
I'm trying to understand, well, first of all, regardless of what is being applied for, when the document is submitted to the board for review, it's part of an application and it's referred to as a site plan application, the use of the property is correctly described, not that application.
Is that, is that your offer in support of your opposition to the objection?
Yes.
Important to take note of that of Mr. Gazarski's position as the required responsible witness. Mr. Gazarski, you stated your position on the record.
Does that require a responsibility? Or does?
I'm saying that's your position. I'm going, I'm going to suggest, we asked the question as to whether or not something says something or doesn't say something, but as to your opinion as to what the legal should, but I think this should be on the question.
Mr. Doherty, in your, in your career, how many thousands of the site by applications you submitted to the board, you a board, not necessarily least board, but any board?
Several dozen, dozens?
I'm sorry?
Dozens?
Dozens, okay. Is it your opinion as a professional plantar engineer that, that there must be a correct reflection in that presentation as to how that property is being utilized?
Certainly, I would say that our plans do represent it accurately. I don't think that, the reference to that note, you asked me specifically about a note on that building, and I explained to you that that is the reference used by the surveyors in existing condition that made that by the survey, which we referenced and is shown on our site plan. However, I don't think, I'm not sure if you read note three on our general notes, did you read that?
I did.
Well, Mr. Gazarski, it says, I'm sorry, Gazarski, it says right here on parcel data use, restaurant and apartments permitted use. So we didn't, we didn't avoid putting. So we didn't, we didn't avoid putting it there, we just simply have the surveyor's reference on the building. And word for word, you can look at the surveyor's document, which I think is significant as a exhibit for application. It says three-story framed basement, stores and apartments, number one thousand and six. And because I'm referencing the surveyor's survey, I have to show that same information that he shows to me. And it's just simply that same note, three-story framed basement, stores and apartments, number one thousand and six. But in our zoning table, we identify the use. So you're saying we didn't even fail to identify, but if you read the zoning table, we do identify the use as restaurant.
The, the use of this property is in fact for a restaurant.
Same objection, Mr. Kovac. I think we're going to go long in truth and long in the hour over something that's not worth for it.
The survey was done in two thousand and eleven, I remember.
Pardon?
The survey was done in two thousand and eleven, that's the date of the year. It's very relevant.
So the, the initial survey was dated two thousand and eleven, but there's been three updates to the survey.
It does have revisions on here. It's not good to date.
Yeah, it's not what they are, exactly.
In your testimony, I believe you stated that basically the area to the rear to the use is, is landmarked, correct?
Yes, from a property standpoint.
So anybody who was in the rear yard in order to egress out into Main Street would have to proceed through the existing building which is there.
Okay. Just to remain on the property.
I understand. I, I understand also that it shows on that survey, it says a one-story deck above. Now, you're familiar with the property and there is in fact a deck either constructed or being constructed above, above the rear portion of that property, correct?
That's what I understand.
Okay, that. Do you know how the intended use of that deck is for, what it's for now? Do you know whether or not, have you ever seen the architectural plans?
No.
The plans show a stairway going up from the ground level to the second deck, to the deck itself. Now, is it your understanding that this rear yard area where the papers are is to be utilized by the residents of the structure, or is it to be utilized by the occupants or clients of the restaurant?
I, I don't understand one way or the other. My understanding is that the patio is there to improve the rear of the property and minimize the maintenance necessary to, to utilize.
Okay, now, for people who are in that rear patio area, in the event of a fire, an emergency, in the dwelling, and they're unable to egress through the dwelling, how would they access to get out of that rear yard?
I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't propose or look to analyze emergency egress from a rear yard of a property.
So anybody then is in the rear yard at the time of a fire and an emergency, and the building itself or the restaurant is engulfed in flames, they can't get out?
No.
Without the fence?
Well, sure.
One of their handicaps.
I don't know what fence.
And that's it, in short answer, or is that like to make a person's handicap get over?
I would like the comments directed to the witness, Mr. Gazarski.
Well, you should not, you should not, you also challenged on a member of the audience for?
I'm going to get to that next. I didn't know you were going to engage him. Comments from the audience should not be done.
Now, let's hold a look at Mr. Major's letter. This is referencing PB one for purposes of the record. What words you said, perhaps your name, correct? Unlike your pronouncing, like that. Now, in looking at the letter of April the twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, please, if your testimony, that any representation you made from here this evening, you're only making on behalf of Mr. Renner and with his authorization.
I'm sorry, you have to say that.
True. During the course of your testimony, you made a number of representations with regards to this property. Am I correct in saying that those representations which you made were only behef, on behalf of Mr. Renner and with his authorization, no one else?
I understand, to be by on his behalf and with his authorization.
Well, you're not speaking on behalf of the owners of Pulo Panos, are you?
Well, I'm not. It's Mr. Scheich's responsibility to represent the applicant. I'm a professional that's hired to prepare the plans and provide testimony for it.
But, but for whom did you prepare this plan?
Mr. Renner.
Did you consult with Mr. Renner prior to your preparation in the fall?
Sure.
Did you consult with him during the, the creation, the drawing of the plan?
Yes.
Okay, so the only person whom you're speaking for is Mr. Renner and no one else?
No, that's not true.
The owner of the property, who else are you speaking for?
Mrs. Renner.
Okay, between Mrs. Renner and the owners of the property, and that's here you are speaking on behalf of her.
No, I'm not speaking on their behalf, I'm speaking on my behalf. I'm representing their application, which I think is very clear, the application is the Renner's. So that the applicant is the Renners and they've, they've retained me to do their engineering services.
Do their engineering services with regards to the presentation of this plan, which represents a building on a section of property or lot along with the so-called no papers, but you're making no representations as to how this building will be operated or utilized?
I'll just, for the form of the questions, three or four questions, I'm instructing not to answer.
What is, what is your understanding, Mr. Renner, as this applies to the service of Doctory, you sit here today, as to how this property is presently being utilized and how it will be utilized?
What's my understanding as to how it's being utilized?
Right.
The commercial tenant, I'm not sure if there's more than one commercial tenant or not, but the ground floor tenant is two pounds restaurant, and there's I think two apartments upstairs. That is really the extent of my understanding.
If the ground floor is being operated as a restaurant. Correct?
I, I just said that.
Okay, fine. Now, let's go to page three of Mr. Three or four, rather, of the major letter. Now, I'll try to short, short circuit this. Would you agree with me that many of the comments of Major, comments one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and so on, refer to the use of the property in which questions as to the use of the property as a restaurant? Is that not so?
Yeah, I mean, it's very clear that there's several instances where Mr. DeNeese's letter mentions the use as a restaurant.
And is it your testimony that you are not prepared to respond to any of those questions posted by Major's objection before?
He is not here to discuss use. And you're implying he's not prepared. He's very prepared. This is not a use application, period.
This is a site plan application.
Not a use application. It's a site, it's a site plan application, period. It's not a use, it's not a change of use, it's not an expansion of use. The site plan application for the work that Mr. Renner did, who was requested to come here by the zoning officer, after he placed papers within a buffer area, he's seeking relief of that buffer area, no more, no less. So we're, we're not mitigating your Superior Court case, we're not litigating Pulo Panos. Mr. Dodgery does not represent Pulo Panos, I do not represent Pulo Panos, we make, we make no reference to that. And we're asking simply for an analysis and a grant of one variance in site plan approval.
They asked me one question, site plan approval for what? I'd like to draw attention to that. Site plan approval for what?
Well, you asked one question. Our site plan requests for the approval for the drainage and the papers that were placed upon the property without prior approval by the zoning office.
So that's, going back to my question, which I think is the one answer by the attorney, you are, you are not in fact responding or prepared to respond to any of the questions posted by Major's associates as to the use of this property and/or any other variances or waivers that are applicable as a restaurant.
Objection. Objection, Mr. Kovac. He's saying he's not prepared to answer the question. He's prepared to testify as to what this application is. This is, he wants, with due respect to Mr. Gazarski, this is becoming a use argument surface. This is not what this is. I need a rule that, that what direction this evening is going to take. I should not be placed in a position to defend what a tenant does within this government. We are not the tenant. Chairman, I think we're, we're, we're an owner of a property, we made an improvement to a property, nothing more, nothing less.
Chairman, I beg. I, I'm not a borough legislator, I didn't write this letter, but if you read the letter which is dated April the fourth, twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, Major poses a number of questions which are shown on pages three and four, which relate to the use of this property. And if this board chooses to disregard that letter and allow this to restrict so much to what the attorney for the office is to debate, then so make that rule. Just simply say that all the comments of Major are an applicable and cannot be considered by this board.
Before we cease, sir, let me, let me state the following to the record, the county report, in reviewing the application. The application this instance states, other irrelevant section, after identifying the use as restaurant and apartments in the existing use CBD one, obtain approval for previously installed paper patio within the rear yard and associated site amenities. No one's identified what the associated site amenities are at this point, directed to best of my recollection. As to the summary of variances and waiver requests, the applicant has provided in a three, variance summary. Reference is Schedule four dash five dash one, capital B, minimum lot area, I'll read them without going through the specifics, minimum lot area, minimum lot width, minimum lot frontage, minimum side yard setback, minimum total yard setback, minimum lot shape requirements. As to subsections as buffering and screen regulations, all uses other than the single family detached, the two-family detached dwellings, and it says theirs accessory uses, shall provide a twenty-five foot, two-five, so those carrying, empty landscape buffer alongside the rear property lines, which are butt areas, zoned residentially or used for residential purposes. That's the listing of variances and some requirements, not to discuss any further relief from the site. To the extent that the record reflects that the current use is restaurant and apartments, the relief sought in the applications for the approval of previously installed paper patio in the rear yard, and I think that maybe the score is whether or not site amenities are associated with some other uses on the property, if they can be occupied, applicant and/or the applicant's witnesses as what the other amenities are will help me as to whether or not Mr. Gazarski can go further with these questions. What are the other amenities?
I have been not able to identify. As a master engineer, are there any other site amenity?
The, the crease and other amenities was just really to include any of the other elements shown on the plans that aren't specifically shown, designated as papers. For example, there's a small new wall around the planter for the tree of reason, paper block to retain the mulch and cement within the tree circle. There's fencing, there's landscape plantings that would be put between the paper area and the fencing. Those are the other amenities. There's no other elements that are proposed that are not shown on the plan that we are asking for or be approved of.
I think Mr. Scheich is correct in his objection as to the application of the use. The use has been identified. I, I don't know what further question we need to, to obtain, what further question we need to draw out from the witness's requirement of use, like the application I've sent to the record in the summary of the variances and waivers requested.
Well, per, is your advice more than that, that you should completely disregard all of those comments listed in view of Mr. Major's firm, dealing with the building on page three by the site plan, and these one through eleven, that they will not be for this board, not to be considered, and are of no relevance. Is that, is that true by sentence?
No. My, my, no, let me state, for purpose of the record, I think all of those things may be irrelevant if they're an issue to determine whether or not the relief by way of a buffer and how deep that buffer should be, how intensive that buffer should be, and to the extent that the engineer has raised potential uses in the future, but the applicant has said those uses are not going to be there, they're certainly relevant for the board's consideration to be waived. My understanding of the testimony at this point in time is, the applicant is advised, despite the comments of the engineer who brought those, and you may still have some presentation from the engineer. With regard to three, still think the word, the word raised, the emergency egress there that was addressed later, to the extent number four identifies tables outdoor seating. My understanding of the state of the record at this point in time is that the sense there's not going to be any tables or seating, and that isn't part of the amendment. So they, no, excuse me, let me, let me speak. So in terms of disregard, no, I think it's something that the engineer raised for their consideration, and based upon the responses given by the applicant, can determine how that may impact whether or not they wish to grant relief by way of a buffer.
This witness, Mr. Renner, did not testify.
Mr. Renner hasn't testified right now.
Pardon?
Mr. Renner has not testified right now, sir.
But you commented as to what, Mr. Renner, you're the one who commented as to what Mr. Renner said. Mr. Renner said that he did not control what was going to be there. He did not make the representation to this board that there will not be dining there, there will not be lighting there. His representation says, he doesn't know whether he has any control over what the tenant is doing. That's what he said.
Fine, but you're examining the engineer based upon what Mr. Renner said. If you want to ask that question to Mr. Renner?
I shall.
Then that's why the objection, that's why Mr. Scheich versus is objecting.
And that's why I posed to you, are you advising this board that all of those items listed in the major letter, the site plan, one through eleven, should be disregarded?
And I'm warning articulately of what my response is.
Pardon?
And I'm warning articulately of what my response is.
I, I.
Can we move on?
Yes. I have other questions of this witness, but I would request that I be able to perhaps ask additional questions in regard to cross-examining the record.
Yes.
I'm looking at the letter with the exhibit which is shown on the board, which reflects the survey and the building which is placed within that survey.
So may I?
Yeah. And you in fact instructed the building, did you not?
I guess I might have.
Okay, now, with regard to the rear of the building, you also instructed an outdoor deck on top of the first floor of that rear portion of the prop, of the building.
Yes, it's certainly a tar roof. I figured to make it more aesthetically looking. I heard a powerway step, of course, the seven thousand dollars to three thousand. We have inlay walls here, and that's part of the ready, and it's a powerway step.
Now, is that deck in part of the lease with the commercial tenant or restaurant downstairs to a pound, or is that deck to be utilized by the residents who are on the second and third floor of this building?
My lease has the, the residents have partial of that, of that deck, and if the board or any, any improvements to the, to this deck from Pulo Panos can use it, you have to go to the zoning board or, or, or planning board for use.
Now, do you know what the total square footage of that deck is? Now, do you know what the total square footage of that deck is?
Uh, I think it's six, six hundred square feet.
And do you know what percentile or what, or what square footage is controlled by the residents and what portion is controlled by the tool panel?
Nothing's controlled by tool panels until improvements or, or any kind of allowances are, are allowed by the planning board or the zoning board. So, right now that's a bed deck, except for ten feet. I allow my, my tenants to take ten feet of that deck.
What's the length of the deck?
Forty feet.
So, of those forty feet, the tenants or the residents have the use of ten feet, the tool panels has the use or has the.
Tool panels doesn't have the use.
Can I finish, please?
Okay.
Can I finish?
Okay.
Tool panels, you're saying if they in fact come before what are the, the planning board or the zoning board to construct dining on that deck has the, will have the right to use the balance of the deck?
If, if the planning board allows it, then, then that's, we'll see what happens. Thing is, I talked to zoning, and for that to happen, it would be a major cost of sprinkler system. So, I don't think that's gonna happen. And I don't even think they're interested in that part.
So, your, your testimony is that you will not allow tool panels to use that deck until such time as they receive the planning board or zoning board approval.
Or that, or that. It's up to you.
Okay, now.
Objection to this line as to how it goes to the issue before the board of papers and what Mr. Koeppes has concluded and narrowed the application to. May be fun for cross-examination and mitigation for a subsequent board hearing, but for this evening, irrelevant. Mr. Renner, Mr. Koeppes, who wants to?
Mr. Gazarovski, is he here to respond?
I don't fully understand what his objection is.
Perfectly asked.
Light it, light it, light it up.
Well, first of all, he submitted, he submitted a survey, he submitted a plan which shows a deck. And my questions posed to him is to whether he's aware of the deck being here. If it is there, who has control of it, who has used it, how will it be used? That's a fair question. That's a, that's a document which has been marked in evidence.
Fair enough. The applicant's testimony at this point in time is that it's not part of this application. And until this time is approved, it's not, still not part of this application. The agreement under due Mr. Shakers is relevant. To the extent this is established, it has some association. Again, to the extent that there's no identity portion of this, if it is relevant, that would be my counsel to the board, the actual testimony, George, etc. That counsel would move on to other areas.
So, Mr. Renner, let's talk about the rear area where the, the papers are. Now, is that paid area, meaning the rear yard of the property, is that part of the lease premises of Tool Panos Restaurant?
Is that part of it?
Yeah.
That's my property, so I have control of that property.
Did you sign a lease?
And I, and, yes.
Okay.
And if, if the tool panels want to utilize that property, as to in the lease, if you read the lease, did you read the lease?
Have you shown me a copy?
No.
Oh, have you shown me a copy?
Objection, hold, tell them, not, this is a record that we're trying to create. Question, answer, response. You have counsel, the counsel believes it's appropriate to object. Means, means we're very capable of doing that.
Hold on, Mr. Koeppes, I'd like to explain on the record. Mr. Renner, listen to a question. It's a yes or no question, or a yes or no answer. This is an intelligent jabs. And for a yes or no question, respond with an answer. Mr. Gazarovski will give you the professional courtesy. Simple question and a simple answer, let's proceed then, okay?
Mr. Renner, is there a trial next to the lease between you and the tool panels?
Yes.
Did you copy that lease when you received it? Sure, now I request that, that lease be produced because it certainly would have an impact upon the manner of the use of this property. And I would request that, that lease in fact deeply, partly, decisions be made by this board. That's a request which I make, and I would proceed on with that question.
Objections are relevant, it will not be produced. He used the word use again to the hundredth thought. Use is not part of this application. Will not be produced. He could get a court order, he'll never get the court order. Use is not part of this application.
I noticed you have a portrait about that set of black robes.
Well, you don't have a set of black robes on, or a set of other things.
What about that?
Let's proceed to this question.
Mr. Renner, you gave a testimony which was elicited by counsel with regards to the, I think several questions were presented by that testimony. One of the terms of the lease which you have with the tool panels, do they have the right to utilize that back area where the papers are as part of their presence?
If it's approved, yes.
If it's approved by the way.
I don't know.
So, if in fact they were to come before this board or any board and make an application to place chairs and tables there under the terms of the lease you have with them, they can do so?
Yes, if it's approved by the board or the zoning.
As a matter of fact, you in fact signed an application with the majority when tool panels were seeking to utilize that back area to get approval to, to locate tables and chairs.
I don't recall that, but if I did, yeah.
Yeah, sure, let me show you this document, which is called, give it one, please, okay?
Lazio Rappers, as to what we concluded is.
I call them, please. It's a verbal, Delmore Outdoor Dining Outdoor Meeting and Side Book Cafe application. The application is to a panelist, and it was signed also by Mr. Renner.
I don't think we signed this back yet, but. Do I show it to Mr. Shakers first? I think we signed that as under other. We're trying to get that on the, on the record, but.
Focus is for the gentleman to take the application. Uh, the way the board, the zoning officer, Bill Martin prefers to have it asked for. I don't know.
I appreciate your courtesy.
It really is.
Oh, I was getting both sides.
No, but I mean, so many times I'm with, where somebody wants to get right into someone's face, and I appreciate it. I really do.
Oh, my, I want to intrude.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board meeting is back in session.
Okay, we're trying to take the records for purpose of the record. We're gonna get that, one, this was to be a document based on what Mr. Gazarovski said as an application to the Borough of Delmore Outdoor Dining, Outward Eating, Side Bar Cafe application. Here's the system, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, but all these may move or pull, pull. Are you saying these are all on documents, sir?
Yes, sir. That's what we submitted to you.
No, that's, that's your representation at this point in time. All of these documents were submitted, okay? Two, one. I'm not challenging that, I'm just thinking of different dates on documents that could have existed together. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen documents. And your representation of these documents are what, sir?
These documents were received from the borough offices of the Borough of the Hall.
But what are the documents, sir? That's what I'm asking. I know, I know what they were received, where you got them from. I'm asking, what is your representation as to what they are?
The document speaks for itself, it's called a document. It's called a document. The document which was received from the offices is an application made before the Borough of Baltimore, signed by the applicant Christina Garcia, and was also assigned reflecting consent of this application by Mr. Renner.
So your representation is that this is all one application, one document submitted by the applicant?
My representation is that this is an application made by, not by this applicant not being Mr. Renner, it's consented to by Mr. Renner. The application is made by Christina Garcia. And to the best of my knowledge, that's what it is.
It's a representation. That's my representation. It's all mine.
Now, if I can, Mr. Renner, if it's on page four of this document, reflects certification and ownership, whether or not that is your signature on there. That's the question. That's the question. Now, prior to signing, did you know what it was you were signing?
Signing as an owner of the building? For the Borough for an application for dining?
Okay. Did you read the document before you signed it?
I'm attorney, and I got an orderized.
Okay. Now, I want to draw you to one of the pages in this. And that's not this application, you collect the papers for dining, not only in the rear area of the patio, but also on top of the deck that you earlier described.
Well, this application isn't about this. How do you want me to answer this? Yes or no?
Yes or no?
The lease states. Like I sign that, sign that piece of paper for the outside dining, I'm the owner of the building. If it's allowed by disowning and the board, or whoever the board they have to go to, I give permission to apply for it. That's all that states. As an owner.
Consent to the applying for it.
I'm the owner of the building.
You absolutely, you have the absolute right to sign this document, but with regard to your representation before this board, when you appeared today, based upon this document which you signed only a month ago, you know, or you knew, that the intentions of Tula Paddle were to utilize the back area for dining as well as the top deck. Were you not?
Not at all. All I'm saying is I give you permission if they can get approved. They can use the whole inside of the building, the outside.
So, you think that it was their intention that they received approvals to use the back area where the pavers are and the deck over the first floor for outdoor dining?
Is there objection, Mr. Shifers, as to his answer?
Yeah, but I'm gonna let it go about five times, because I feel at some point you're gonna hurt enough, and the board's gonna hurt enough. I mean, I must actually have done five times already.
What's his answer?
He said it five times already.
What's his answer? Yes. I'm the owner of the building, and I signed it. If it gets approved.
Number six.
Now, with regard to that back area, once again, I have some questions, engineer, with regard to emergency access out of the back area. Now, if in fact the back area is approved, and the top deck is approved, and there's a fire involving the building.
I'm gonna object to the back area and the top deck. The top deck and the back areas are not part of the application. Mr. Kovac?
I agree that that's not relevant. And the council board, that's not relevant, it's not part of this application. Right now, it's a hypothetical, we're just for the purposes.
Mr. Renner, if in fact individuals are present in the back area of this property where the pavers are located, and a fire breaks out in the building, making it impossible to exit off the entrance to the building, how will those individuals get out of the back area?
I'm gonna object, I'm gonna instruct him not to answer. Mr. Kovac, doesn't matter whether there's a paper on the ground, or whether it's grass, whether there's mud, or a flood. If a fire breaks out under this question, simply irrelevant. Our application is for paper in a buffer zone. Period. It's not about fire, it's not about ingress and egress. It's about paper versus pre-existing prior pavers and previous grass and what.
Renner, in light of the comment by your counsel.
Not comment, instruction, not trying to answer the question.
Why would you need a waiver from the buffer area? Because if the back property is not being utilized, you just simply got the buffer there.
That's not even a question.
I agree.
Any other questions?
I don't have further questions. Any further questions of any of the other witnesses?
No, I did not.
No, sir.
Do you have questions?
We asked for public questions, and Mr. Gazarovski had the last.
Excuse me, I'm gonna turn it off. Why am I deprived from asking questions, questioning the witnesses?
He's representing, he's a delegate.
He's not representing, he's a member of the public. I'm an attorney, I have a right to ask the witnesses questions.
We had, just for purpose of the record, let me respond. We had previously asked for any questions from members of the public before, major attorney, but I assume you're also a member of the public. We had waited for anyone, no one else stepped forward, at that point in time, Mr. Gazarovski said he was going to have questions, and we proceeded then, wanted to have those questions.
No one's saying, let me just respond. That is just simply not so.
That is, that is the sentence.
That is not so.
Mr. Gazarovski, you're out of order. Would you please sit down?
I'm not, why am I to respond to a statement made by you?
Would you please sit down? But I'm going to ask you to please sit down.
How about you sit down? I have a right to stand here and speak to the board.
May I ask you that you slide over to the front of the mic, so that this individual can articulate their position?
I like to argue this. I'm Marvin Van Highs. I'm an attorney, I have a license to practice in the state of New Jersey. I spent twelve years as a municipal judge. I think I know a little about the rules. You did not state that once Mr. Gazarovski took the floor and questioned the witnesses, that anyone else was denied that right. I have a right to come to this meeting and ask questions as a lawyer, licensed to practice in the state of New Jersey, following Mr. Gazarovski. Now, how you can tell me that based on, first of all, there is no clarification made to state that if anyone else who isn't licensed, or who is licensed, has to wait, or Mr. Gazarovski has to go last? That's patently offensive. If you would close to do it to me.
Allow the witness to go. Obviously, I asked questions of any witnesses, but I would say, for purpose of this record, are there any other individuals that are going to want to cross-examine the witnesses? Not comment, to cross-examine the witnesses?
That depends, sir, on what is elicited here, and I may take that opportunity.
Anyone else?
For the record, I also wish to exercise an objection. I've never heard of a board attorney suggesting to an applicant's attorney that he raised, asked and answered objections to questions. I don't understand what rules apply in this proceeding.
Mr. Renner, can you describe with any specificity at this point in time the size of the drainage areas, the drying wells, or the pit that, you said that if you put twenty tons of stone, have gravel on each one, but do you have any description or location of those specific on the plate?
These are actually, I don't know. Identify what he's referring to for purpose. Hold on, hold on. Identify what he's referring to for purpose of the record. Sure, council, you do that.
Yes, if you would. You're citing from what document is this?
It's a model ready survey.
Is that marked? Is applicant's exhibit?
Yes, it is.
A four. As the A four, there is a appearance to be controlling. Can you give the dimensions of that control?
Mr. Van Highs, when you asked the dimension, what dimension are you referring to, sir?
Obviously, well, I specifically want to know what the dimensions, the depth and the size of the gruggles are. Sorry.
Do you understand it, though?
The depth is actually the six feet eight. The mention probably would be, it's ten foot, ten foot, twelve foot wide.
And was the, any initial, a municipal engineer or construction code or zoning official, did any individual put by municipality examine those before they recovered the payment?
It was called by his own boss, sir. We called him, stopped by, and they took a look, and they had, maybe they got your question in, but I was also told that I wasn't allowed, or my decision should have allowed.
Okay. But, and your understanding was that you were allowed to install them without any verification or inspection by the municipality, is that correct? Now, I don't, do you have any topo map or survey that shows the grading of that property?
Bill, yeah, let Mr. Van Highs finish his question, and I'll get his full question out, and Bill will give you a courtesy, but get your full answer out. You can't speak over each other for the record, okay? Even though you anticipated a question.
Do you have any topo, any survey that shows the grading level of the rear of that property that is presently covered with a page, fire, or things?
We have a topographical survey, I'm not going to grade it.
Now, then ask him.
On the same document.
Do you have anything prior to the installation, to say top of top graphical before the pavers were installed? And am I correct? Did you not have a block cat skid loader that you regraded the rear of that area with? So you have not presented and are not prepared to present to the township, to the municipal engineer, any gradient information regarding the rear of that property prior to the installation of the pavers and the work that you did?
The topographical drawing they had now is existing top graphical.
And the municipal engineers' report states.
What page, sir?
I'm looking for the, on page four or five. Says, it appears that some of these paper areas may drain toward the rear of the property.
Quote point had.
Number eight, issue eight.
That's where it says applicant's engineer?
Yeah, it says engineer, yes, to the center of that paragraph.
Would you like to address that to the engineers, Renner?
Well, I want to ask Mr. Renner. Mr. Renner, when those pavers were installed, did you actually do the installation yourself?
No, I haven't.
Okay. And did they do any engineering work to ensure that the area of those pavers is well?
Yes, we did agree to install the pavers, and with consideration of our grades to accept the water, and also our drainage on top of our dry wells, and then also placed into our planting area.
Now, do you have a, Mr. Renner, have you calculated the total square feet area that you plan to use for the buffer that is not taken square footage of the?
The posable floor has four point one, four feet one inch around the whole exterior of the building. Plus there's also planters, a large planter, set planter, and a side planter.
And how, and have you calculated the square footage?
I can't.
And how do you intend to maintain that area?
It's gonna be like evergreen, so it's easy to maintain.
But there's no, has there been a submission of landscape plans submitted to this application?
I can't do that yet, because I might go on to look. I might get fined also. I have to wait till I get approvals, and then start planning. Put that towards, has to be approved by board, they'll take a look at the layup.
So it's your testimony that you can't maintain the rear of the property without the pavers, but you can maintain the buffer area with plantings?
Like, we'll land each a lot easier, come back once a year and trim them, that, you know, the rest of the, grassy area, it was a lawnmower issue, that we had no way of getting a lawnmower in that unless we want to move the building, and that was a large maintenance problem.
Would it not be possible to leave a lawnmower in the rear of the building?
Possible. This is possible.
So that you would not have to bring it through the building more than once?
I'd have to put a shutout. And that's another issue.
Now, Mr. Renner, you've spoken numerous times tonight with regard to your tenant, and that if in fact your tenant, being Tula Paddle, made another application before the zoning or planning board for authorization to use this area for the rear of the building, putting the cave area for outside dining, then you support that, is that correct?
I have two tenants downstairs, a tenant, and I have two tenants that are signed in for upstairs. So, right now, I have the permission to use any part of that property before any approvals are actually granted.
And you stated to this, how, to the planning board, that those approvals you would expect to come from the planning or zoning board, is that correct?
You have to find out what the board's recommendations.
So I'm asking, did you not make a statement, sir?
Well, I'm going to object to, and continue mine, I did object to the first and second question I gave, from my perspective, I've given latitude to Mr. Van Highs, but it's been to the point that Mr. Renner is not asking this board for anything other than approval sought in the application. Mr. Renner is not looking for any approvals from this board to operate this restaurant outside of any town with any approval.
Well, let me, let me respond. I'm sorry, sir.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to respond to.
Go right ahead, Mr. Van Highs.
Certainly, you wish to exclude any discussion with regard to use, but I don't know how this board can make a determination without some indication of the use of this particular area that is covered with papers, when in fact, an application has already been submitted for its use as outside dining, and endorsed by Mr. Renner for the documentation that the, Mr. Gazarovski produced. Then I would argue that for this board to grant the installation, that actually, the rubber stamp has approved something that was taken by this applicant, specs that was taken without authority, know, and now, and knowing full well that there's been this representation before this board, because Mr. Renner was part of the application process for the outside use for this particular area, and how you, this board, could make a determination as to whether the request of relief is granted or not, and consider isolating the use from the installation itself, and what Mr. Renner has already submitted and written in support of the applicant, would be absurd. So the applicant certainly would like to carve out use, make no reference to use, but he knows very well that there is a pending application for the municipality, and I would further up. And Mr. Renner has stated at least three times, that I heard, that if Tula Paddle gets the requisite planning or zoning board approvals, then he would concur with, but he knows very well, because he sat in this hearing a year ago, and this board stated that it had no jurisdiction over outside dining use. He knows that neither the planning or zoning board will take jurisdiction over outside dining use. And this board stated last year that it had no jurisdiction. So to circle this and fly around this issue, and say that it is not before this board is like having the elephant in the room that no one wants to acknowledge. And I challenge this board to think back to the discussion a year ago, and how you can completely isolate for some perceived improvement of approving the pavers without having some knowledge of the use, is ridiculous to even consider. Certainly, the applicant would like to carve it out, and Mr. Renner, I would submit, there's that issue in his own test. there's that issue in his own testimony. He opened the door, I'm just going through it. If it hadn't been raised and stated, I would not be privileged to raise that issue. And so in response to council's objection and the board attorney's qualifiers throughout this entire evening, I'd argue it, it's ridiculous in view of the fact that it's already been demonstrated to the board that this applicant was part of an application for the use of that particular area of this property, that he put the papers down before the municipality ever approved them, did all the work and bringing, and then say that can't be considered tonight, is ridiculous. We didn't raise this issue. They opened the door. We're just walking through, Mr. Geserowski and I. Those are the rules of the case. Response. Are you ready for the questions, Mr. Van Hyne? For next time, is there a question? Uh, no. I, well, I have, I have a question on, I think that, I'd like to know what types of plantings are proposed for the buffer, have a pool to wipe, propose buffer and, and papers for the rest of it. I think that the board is obligated to get some finding as to what, what is planned to be put in there.
I think that was asked and answered with other.
He, he mentioned tulips too.
He, he said he thinks one of the plants tulips, it was out of the work group.
I would like to know if in that buffer is any proposed light? Mr. Renner, you propose to put any lighting in that buffer area?
Um, here's why I was ran there. That has probably quite a, a, a board to wipe.
What would my, that be?
You, Mr. Renner, you don't get, yes, that's one of these call in shows.
It's low.
Have knowledge.
It's low lighting.
No, that one.
Low lighting on, on the, uh, I need their colors for something.
So is that, is that being submitted for the board approval of this part? I mean, the board, the board has wide discretion, sir, to determine what conditions it may wish to provide the good grants to leave requested and that's the reason I'm asking the question. If, if the board is going to grant a relief to your request for the forfeit buffer new to twenty-five, what you proposed specifically to do with, with that area, buffer?
There's no light to, to light here for large areas.
And for what purpose?
Just to save.
For whose use?
For my use, for my tenants' use. I have two, two apartments upstairs. I don't want to get sued, I'd be lighting.
Now, um, Mr. Renner, you spoke earlier of the high water table and the overflow. Do you have any statistical data with regard to the water level in that area and the amount of the water that is being pumped or run into the subsurface drainage system that you installed?
Depends on the volume of rain.
Do you have any calculations based on the annual rain averages or anything of that?
Anything from the weather department. I don't know. We, we have tried last summer because there's no rainfall on the avenue.
But you have no professional calculations that have been prepared by any engineer that issue any surface runoff or downstream?
Well, it don't have to be, is your engineer. Draw. Drawing walls is going to take water from the, from the roof lines and put them underground.
Mr. Pope, as we had suggested for your request earlier, I don't know if it was per Mr. Geserowski's questioning or the board questioning, I have a written down, we appreciate the provided during calculations.
We, we need to do that and we'll also need to comply with regulations.
Okay, that is over.
Not simply submit, but.
All right, so whatever.
He, he brought in some term roof leaders as well.
Okay, fine.
I will note for the record also that the, at this point in my notes, and I'll stand corrected, item number seven, referenced before, the applicant should address whether lighting will be provided for the rear of the property. The lighting information has been provided, which cannot determine whether or not it will be outside impact in the adjacent residential properties. And I know this indicates that it is up to paper for, you know, right. If there is one light, my highest is, was raised, is a, is an issue again with the board to write that data to the borough engineer and the volume of, of the, of comments about that light.
If Mr. Renner proposed installation of any lighting, you would provide that data to the borough engineer and apply to the borough engineer.
Um, Mr. Renner, with regard to the application, I know the question was raised with your engineer, but I don't know if you addressed it. In your mind, I, sir, under number, letter, uh, number five, item five, page four of white of the borough engineer's report, the applicant seeking approval for previously installed papers and other amenities. In your mind, I, one of those other amenities?
The other amenities are, I spelled out, so I can't say it.
But to the applicant, sir, what amenities do you seek approval for? Anything other than? I think, I think we need a verification of that.
All right, you'll have to be sworn as well, to like to be sworn. And if you cross the bank, it's back in his eyes. No?
No.
If he can't answer the question, then I'll leave the question posted. Perhaps council's in question again. I, I'd like to know from your perspective as the applicant, not an expert acting or testifying on your behalf, what in your mind is referred to when you, from the application for to manage yourself?
I don't want to answer that.
Well, Mr. Van Hyne, Mr. Van Hyne is asking you, really, you know, that you're aware of other than the papers, possibly the local people, like, and the landscaping.
That's, that's why I built that back there.
But those are the only items?
That we're seeking.
That you're seeking. And you're, you do not intend to put anything else in there?
Time tells what will happen.
Question for this application, so I know it's getting away, you know, you're close to ten, you're getting here. Mr. Van Hyne, that's the right answer. For this application, for your papers and your, your pit?
It's all annual, it's all.
Correct?
It says what you're.
I have, I have no further questions from Mr. Renner, but I do have two questions for Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, everyone. We'll knock it back. Mr. Doherty, you're up. Oscar.
Thank you.
If it's, it's not, if it's not my problem.
Very strange.
Please forgive me.
Not typical part of the route.
Um, Mr. Doherty, you testified that in your opinion as an expert engineer, that the papers improved the rear of that property, is that correct?
Well, the installation and all, yes.
Did you see the property before they were installed?
No.
And how can you testify that it improved if you didn't know what it was before you come before?
There was no, I didn't inspect the property before. I would base that on the presumption that there was no previous drainage improvements, collection facilities, drainage pits. I understand the property that I wanted.
And you're, that's, in, in your understanding, as an expert, do you consider grass area impervious?
Well, by definition, grass area is not impervious.
Right, right. I may misunderstood, but I was to counsel the, earlier to say, the grass is not impervious. So that in your, in your opinion, you cover eighty plus percent of the rear of that area? What, can you tell me what, again, what percentage of that rear yard area is now?
I didn't.
So you, you can't tell me, I put, I put some reference to the total area now that is impervious.
The total area of the lot that's impervious?
Yes.
The lot size is six thousand six hundred feet, square feet. And of that total lot area, five thousand five hundred thirty are impervious. And that's equivalent to eighty-three point seven percent.
There is eighty-three percent of the total lots is impervious.
I, correct, come on, that was the question you asked me. You asked me about.
Perhaps there's a question. I mean, you told me you didn't calculate the paper area, then, then.
I, I thought the question that you asked me was, did I calculate the area of impervious surfaces from the, from the papers?
I would say including the, including the papers to the entire lot. So it's eighty-three percent of the lot is now impervious.
Yes, based upon the, the survey by Mr. Reagan, the, the last advised.
And, and that impervious area by definition means that all the surface water on those papers has to run off somewhere.
Well, as does surface water runoff from quote unquote impervious surfaces. It's just activated.
So do you have any calculations that would show the rear of that property area that was grass, sand, whatever it was before the papers went down as compared to?
I, I didn't perform any hydraulic calculations on the pre-impervious, shall we say, versus the paper proof areas. However, with the knowledge that the rooftop runoff previously was not trititary to any collection facility and is now trititary to the seedage pits, I conclude that it's an improvement of the surface runoff standard. In addition, the applicant's installed some in the vicinity of the rear of the building so that groundwater does rise up, it's pumped out to the street front issue. So as Mr. Renner had, had summarized, and I agree with the introduction of the runoff to the seedage pits was a good thing from, from a surface runoff perspective. If that were to impact the groundwater levels or even just locally inundate the groundwater levels into a higher groundwater level, the sub pump is there to trip on and pump the groundwater level down.
I have, there, well, I'm going to rely on the county municipal engineer. I will come up further. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm exceptional as an engineer, be honest with you, with regard to the surrounding areas. I may, you testified that, and I may say this incorrectly, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's common practice for the commercial properties to consist of, not all, oftentimes all impervious area, material.
Oh, no.
All right.
You make, you make. The, in general, this area is, has a, the individual uses and commercial uses in this area have a very high pavement impervious percentage. And they're permitted to by orders to up to one percent.
Are you familiar with the two adjoining properties?
I did not specifically discover that.
So if I told you that the property, uh, replacing, looking from Main Street on the subject property, I can't tell, that would be looking north, uh, easily. Well, I guess it'd be the southerly direction. If I, if I told you the both of those.
No, Robert, that's not, Mr. Van Hyne, we have a market day, so I believe you love it.
Again, our project is PIQ in gray and north is up, using the street.
Okay, so the two, the, the rear yard, if I said to you, the two rear yards are the southerly most properties, meaning below the PIQ, the both on the rear yards are, are grass, then you wouldn't have an opinion one where the other?
No.
Okay.
I should say, I agree, we have. Sir?
No, I'm not. You don't have to.
Samuel, what we're going to, I'm going to check out, I'll be brief. Just want to ask Mr. Renner a few questions. Mr. Renner, I'd like to try to clarify the record or clarify my own, uh, this two points on the minutes here. About what time did the work have issued, events?
Day wide, I have it on my record.
Is it fair to say that that work was done around the same time that the renovations to the building were made?
Actually, I always thought that had to be started before renovations, maybe renovations that was downstairs to go into the home, op cat, whole buildings are open up by two, seven foot area, so. Crayon, they'd be done before the renovation, the major renovation.
You know, also some renovations being done, not major, but some renovations being done. Sure. All these, all these papers and drainage system were, were prepared for, done.
Yes.
Okay. So is it a fair statement that the papers and drainage system and the work done to the back is part and parcel of the work attempt as a building owner to accommodate or payment to the payment threshold?
No.
Why is that?
Why is that? I built this from a maintenance free backyard. That was, that was quite intentional.
How much is the cost?
Of the, of the papers? I would say about forty thousand.
And that, about the drainage system?
Drainage system we did in house, probably cost two thousand.
You did this just sort of, you made the script?
I own a lot of properties. I can't affect lawn down every property.
There was lawn there?
I, it's actually lawn court, lawn, it's over ground.
Of course, renovations on the building done at about the same time as the renovations or, I'm sorry, as the drainage system and the papers in the backyard, were done prior to any approvals or anything, like any board, is that correct?
Yeah. It was, I think, my side, my side, they were, they were approved or something. They, they had to be started, started going on, you can make a lot of potential mess. And, and, and that's special for everything. This project took, took over two years, but I have to say, I shut down over six years, emergency, from it was issued. So it was a long, long haul for renovation, I'm just, I'm just right there.
And without complete approvals for a restaurant in that building, you renovated after all this, is that correct?
I renovated the building to accommodate the restaurants. Two, two retail stores, highlight of my, my building. So I put all, three years of all my money on the study, I'm just bored. I understand, are you okay? I renovated a commercial property, utilization and any type of business that wanted.
At this point, I'm going to close questioning for the applicant's witnesses. And I'm going to ask Mr. Geserowski, do you have a presentation you'd like to present?
I do.
Yeah, my. Mr. Renner, again, I really have a lot of presentation, uh, to give, I, I use the evidence, the evidence. The one, I'm lost, I'm not that case. Identified out, because he's indicated by this.
Mr. General, if you would, if you identify yourself as.
An American, my name is Gordon, General of G E M N A, having address of six K, Seneca Place, Oceanport, Jersey. It's one. I do. Thank you again. Okay. Gordon, Jonathan, James, and G E M N A.
So, Mr. General, can you be telling the, uh, with regards to the testimony before this floor and the effect of the, to the, to the.
Yes.
And, uh, are you a licensed license planner or a certified contractor?
Yes, I am. I was licensed in nineteen eighty-nine, uh, and licensed planner for since then. And I've been passing up period in front of hundreds of boards, uh, towards local county. I've provided from the state agencies, I've been accepted as licensed professional planner by the security boards of the state of New Jersey. And I wasn't testified in front of the U.S. Congress. That's important to me.
We accept.
Mr. General, uh, prior to coming here to give testimony, this evening, what steps have you been taking to familiarize yourself with the facts of this case, uh, regarding this procedure, uh, in preparation to coming here this evening?
Yes, I had the opportunity to review the application and other correspondence and connection with the application. I had the opportunity to review the plans attached, I used the origins of the thorough, uh, Delmar, and also review the transcript of a meeting of office six, two thousand and thirteen.
That, that was the application when Tula Pano's restaurant was before this floor, see, in certain.
That is correct.
Now, uh, having said that, uh, in the present, this evening, throughout the testimony, the building was to better as well as to do.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and, uh, as you, the president, when I made my initial presentation comments with regard to, uh, the priority of those which was given to the public in some of this matter.
Yes, sir.
Now, as a professional planner, uh, do you have any opinion as to the priority, the efficacy, or that ways?
Uh, just that, when you look at the notice, it only indicates that they're seeking a buffer requirement for four point one feet, uh, or twenty-five feet is proposed. And it's kind of even quirky on that because it says four point one feet exists, doesn't denote it's a previous condition. But if I was looking at that, I don't know what's four. Doesn't say anything about, uh, what's the buffer for, what are you talking about? It just says seeking buffer requirement for four point one feet. So as a professional planner, it's important for me to understand what they're seeking unless I saw, unless I then looked at the application in and of itself and I said, okay, the application is now for this payed area with that four point one feet.
Now, the application reflects it being a site plan, does it not?
Yes, sir.
And in reading the notice, why did any of you determine the site plan to be four?
Well, again, I couldn't tell what was four. It just says four point one feet, the buffer requirement, but doesn't say what is in that four point one feet.
Did you also familiarize yourself with the zoning ordinance located?
Sure.
It's in Delmar C B D dash one zone. Now, pursuant to the zoning ordinance and also in reference to the letter prepared by Major Consulting, what variance is aimed or waywards is the applicant seeking this?
There are a bunch of variances that I easily concede are predating on conforming, given the shape of the block and the lot. Minimal lot size, minimal frontage, side yard setbacks, side yard total, minimal logage. And notice part of the case that they will create different conditions that they will, the lot size, which is fine. Then, it indicates there's need for a buffer for residential use of four point one feet, where twenty-five feet is required. But again, it doesn't say what it uses for. And there's been a lot of conflict back and forth tonight. One of the things I looked at was public record. Public record really shows in front of this town, there's an application seeking to use that rear yard for first parks. And as a planner, it would be inappropriate for me not to consider what's on your public record, when I look at what variances are required and how is it being used. I think, you know, it's not appropriate, do not they consider that in the context of a variance application? So in that context of a variance application, uh, it's necessary to consider everything that's being used. So how is that impact the people, uh, or the users? And in that context, your engineer brings up a couple of points. Your engineer says, not me, that in fact, if you're using that property to the rear, then in fact, that property to the rear has additional seating. The application in front of your zoning official, not in front of a board. And in fact, Mr. Windis at the meeting of office six made it clear that it's not the board you're in front of. Mr. Windis on page fifty-seven of the transcript says, it's not under our purview and that is under the zoning official's purview. He's right. This town, that's all public. It's all from the zoning official, point authorities, however proper, that the applicant has experience in all of this, knows it. So, you have to take into consideration now that they're in front of you for variance, what that means and how it's going to be used because not the objective, but the applicant himself assigned an application to use it for someone else. And in that context, your engineer's a hundred percent correct. You got to consider, are they required official parking? Because parking in Delmar is a function of the number of tables. The application clearly shows a number of tables in the backyard. That would increase the parking requirement. At the last meeting, when the applicant was questioned and said, you put a parking calculation of ninety, ninety-four seats. And when the question was raised, that back there over the front yard, Mr. Collins, on the record said, this is nothing to do with backyard, this is only inside and open. So that parking calculation based upon, set upon this board, nothing to do with backyard. And you made a decision based on that. Therefore, when they add more tables in the backyard, that's an additional parking demand. Have to consider that, that's a variance. There's something else, that's a variance. And it's not just a buffer and your attorney brought it up. He questions Mr. Collins. As to setbacks, the twenty-five foot setbacks, have a buffer or does that say? It says a note in your zoning report. And the note in your zoning report says, in the zoning table, it's, it's a, it's a. Schedule forty dash five one D says that for buildings and structures in a commercial zone, that's a five-foot rear yard setbacks required. But note seven says, if a lot of us in residential zone use amendment twenty-five rear yard setbacks are required. When the applicant's engineer was asked, well, that's from structures accessory buildings, that's not a structure. Well, actually, it's more, because your ordinance defines structure as follows. Structure is defined under section forty dash two point four as code, "A combination of materials perform a construction for occupancy, use or fragmentation, whether installed on, above, or below the surface of the parcel of land, and including among other things, displays, dams, fences, walls, gasoline pumps, gates and gateways, mobile dwellings, outdoor bins, curviles, platforms, pools, porches, reduced stands, sales stands, signs, stadiums, staging, standpipes, tennis courts, tanks seventy-nine, stents, towers, or trailers." That's structure. The ordinance says, okay, no structure, nothing with twenty-five feet of residential zone. That's important because it's not just a buffer standard, that's the bulk standard. As was discussed later on, a bulk standard has to meet the criteria, kind of be a C one, C two, the variance requirement. If you do not meet that criteria, bulk a structure within twenty-five feet that applicant is not permitted to keep. And that's what I think for terms of criteria, but that's important in sex. So when you look at what variances are required, based upon what's on the public record, based upon what you know about the public record now, based upon the use of the rear yard, do you have a buffer variance? Do you certainly have the parking variance? And you have a setback variance? That's not me, it's from the ordinance.
Okay, Mr. General, we know from the utility which is marked as O one, that the applicant, Mr. Renner, knows full well how this tenant intends to utilize this property. Because that proposed use as in the correct in O one, have an impact upon buffering, lighting, setbacks, noise control, and things such as that.
Sure, your engineer in his letter brings that up. Doesn't bring it up because he's just trying to say what's not in front of the applicant, in front of the board. He understands those are important considerations for this board to take under, to take into account because you have the right and have the variance to install the front. So it's not like you ignore it, that applicant said, that's why your engineer brought it up. He said, you got to look at lighting, you got to look at a landscaping plan, not a, by everything. You have all those things that go into the variance relief to put in a commercial use next to a residential use.
Is everything in the plans which were submitted would show and reflect the location of the compressors, predictions for this building, and/or the exhaust space for the operation of the restaurant?
Not that I saw it.
Is that significant?
Well, certainly, when one of the items you have to look at the variance relief is, has it impacted the variance? In terms of noise, in terms of odies, those are important considerations for variance relief. And to go further, in terms of trash removal and trash storage, those are all items that you as pilots would normally look at and in context of writing an application, decide doesn't happen at worst use. Because if you find that it has an adverse use, then in fact, the applicant hasn't had the board approved. But I go one step further. It's not the objective, in the variance case, to show the adverses. It's up to the applicant to show that there's not an adverse use, that it doesn't impact people next to them. And if you don't supply the information that you need in order to make that determination, you can't make that determination.
Mr. General, in, in the course of your making presentations, your testifying before boards, and you had occasion to read other engineering reports prepared by engineers as concerning site planners applications.
Yes, sir.
And looking at the, uh, the report prepared by Major Soski, where specifically, I mean, one through eleven, on pages three and four of the ID letter, have any of these been addressed by the applicant in his presentation on this case?
No, for the most part, none of them have, because the outstanding has continued to say it's not appropriate.
Now, is there any else in the ordinance which the board should take into consideration within the context of this applicant?
The only other thing the board should look at, in my opinion, is definition of buffer. So you understand how many fine buffer and then how should be refined. And in sections forty point two point four, applies buffer address. And the area within a property or site generally adjacent to and parallel with property line is consisting of natural visiting vegetation or created by use of trees, shrubs, fences, and or burns designed to continuously limit view and or sound from the site to adjacent sites or properties. And what's important is how you define it, from which one gets what's your intent. And the intent of the ordinance here is to limit continuous view and sound from one site to the next. Have to ask the seller, if, as you know, because this application, Eddie, you're going to have outdoor lighting. And if that outdoor lighting has a six-foot buffer and some evergreens of some size, no doubt, because the applicant has a total size at four foot, is that sufficient to limit light, sound, noise, odor? And the information is not in front of you to make that decision, then you can't say it doesn't have an adverse use.
Well, I noticed in the zoning ordinance, it states sort of off the mission of the general ordinance, particularly referring to section forty dash one point two, which states in subsection A, "The guide to refer to use of developing all elements in the borough and neighborhood to commit to public health, safety, morals, and general welfare." Has it anything in the testimony, or is it the engineer, or Mr. Renner, which addresses any of those issues which are important to this community?
Well, not that they're important. Those are the purposes of zoning I set forth in your ordinance, section forty dash one point two. There's also the purpose of zoning that's found in what's called municipal land resource. So when you look at an application, you have to judge by, oh my, is it charged with advancing the purpose of zoning? What does this thing do to advance the purpose of zoning? And the applicant's very clear, he's not going to tell you anything about how this impacts, what it does do to advance the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Other have to make claim that somehow it's easier to take care of the back papers, just papers, not for the application pending in front of your zoning officer that they sign. And even though they haven't done previous versus post-construction laws, they're flowing, trust me, they're flowing. Like your engineer's going to determine that after you decide. I just proper, if you decide yes, and the law wasn't better, does that mean answers up?
Mr. General, you indicated that you were ready, you really were transferred of the appearance of the Tula Pano applicant before this third, they would be represented by Collins, did you not?
Yes, sir.
Was it not the statement, rings and test, to Collins, that one person, that Tula Pano was back for a site manager?
Well, I, I don't remember exactly where it was, but it was clear that Mr. Collins made it clear on the record that he was here not for anything to do with the outside. That there's something that was going to take place on the outside, that would come back. Now, I'm right, he said that he's been made this board, or he also was playing a little bit of national, this, not the zoning officer. And, and just to be clear, one of the things this board can do, very easily, is say, if I'm going to give your grant of variance, now, in no circumstances does anybody have the right to use the back for anything, let's come back in front of it. You know, it's conditioned to variance. So to make it clear, not the way, not that the company's on official, that's within your purview or within your jurisdiction, show the right, conditioned variance. And Mr. Collins had said, welcome back, this is our.
Now, with regard to the variance relief, uh, as we reviewed all those variances requested and as we qualified, uh, what must be presented by the applicant to qualify for the variances? And having said that, in your mind, as a professional planner, what does he show?
Sure, well, as this board knows from public record a hundred times, there are two tests for variance relief. One is to be one standard, that's the undue hardship. As a result of any public threat, they go to conditions with the property, including the structures, could be an undue hardship upon the applicant, in fact, they warned people that would be cranky. Now, my opinion, as an undue hardship, they gotta show it for buffer, parking, setbacks. The second standard is whether that somehow the grant of relief advances the purpose of zoning I set forth in your ordinances. And that events outrays any detriment upon the public good or the intended purpose of your zone plan. If it's supposed to be a weighing under the C one, principal seat test, there's any way to mitigate the impact. So those are the two standards that the board's use in determining whether the variance relief is appropriate. And just by doing quickly, while I'm running the plate and, from the test to the chase, onto the C one standard, the applicant have to say, that somehow, that because of the structure of the building, that it's an undue hardship upon the applicant. If you deny them anything to do with setbacks, anything to do with buffer, anything to do with, in this case, the parking. And as I think this board did, and from a while ago, he said, can you just push that? Like, can you just make it burn, can you just make it landscape with that? And the answer is, like, cut the grass. If currently grass is an undue hardship, then I've got an undue hardship for my house. Regarding more landscaping and a buffer for residential uses is an undue hardship. Now, that's a good problem. So, I would think you can possibly say, and use the C one standard, by any stretch of any imagination. Uh, and when you go to look at what you need of parking variance and clearly, based upon the use that they have following in front of the zoning office, if you need a parking variance, argument is, well, I'm using public parking. It's public parking available, but the applicant has to make a determination that in fact, is sufficient public parking available. As, as discussed, as any branch approach. And somehow it's an undue hardship upon Tula Pano's, if you don't have this well, this actually. Second part is, this is advancing purposes of zoning. I would, and this is one counter, you're going to have an adverse impact upon the areas. At the last meeting, it was mentioned from the board self about what the problems might be if you have people eating in the back. That's not mine, statements, it's the board's. And you recognize properly, if there's people in the back eating all hours of the day, and. And by the way, Tula Pano's on their website says, on Friday and Saturday night, open till eleven, on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Sunday, open to ten. If that's going on in the backyard, I'm going to have your wildest imagination, you can't believe. can't believe, it's likely to have an impact on people living in the backyard. In terms of noise, light, which by the way, you don't know how much light's on there again, in terms of odor. So for you to say that it doesn't have adverse impact upon the variance, I think sort of defies logic. You to say to advance the purposes of, the only purposes of that hasn't discussed tonight being advanced, is that somehow it looks nicer, and it's easier to maintain. I would proffer, not allowing a restaurant in the back, it's otherwise the same thing property, I'm putting it Beijing, I'm putting it herself.
Mr. Jem, Mr. Rettner made a comment, a question about lighting, that it simply to be low-level lighting of the area of the, 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 quite new areas. Is it possible that that low-level lighting at the ground level will also sufficiently light the second level of the deck where people sit here and eat and know what they're looking to do?
Well, for this one, I don't know, but they need to eat them. And there's no indication here of what the lighting thing would be, or even be required. Remember, you kind of restaurants with eating out there, that's the application in front of another board, you've got to consider, and they have to have some level of light for safety. So if you're going to serve food, you're not giving them, you still have to have enough lighting so they can see what they're doing. And certain that board should consider what that might be for private.
Well, I want to question with regard to what Mr. Pre-Resister, uh, relevance to non-resistencies of the law.
Well, pre-existing, the applicant properly identifies that pre-existing variance is to the bulk, as to the size of the property. And doesn't identify, but it seems to say that existing is the papers. Well, that was existing, but the applicant put it in. It's not something because it was pre-existing, and in that sense, a pre-existing not performing use. The applicant did it, got stopped, and that was a progress more.
Now, presence is made also, we got into the C two variances. In your opinion, can this in fact qualify for the C one, where it's utilizing the origin of a function?
No, I think I indicated before that it can qualify, something on the record to show that the inability to use the backyard as intended, and that shown, would in any way render a hardship, or otherwise, man can't take care of property. And further on, to finish stuff on the C two, that the applicant hasn't shown how it is advancing any purpose of zoning, has certainly not shown in any way how it's not having adverse impact upon the property. Noise hasn't shown secondly, of the C two criteria, that doesn't have an adverse impact upon the intended purpose of your zoning ordinance. As you guys are, it's clear through a zoning ordinance says, that you shall have a twenty five-foot buffer from residential use, and despite the fact that it's just near the neighbor's property, or eight feet away from the neighbor's property, you still have the right to use the backyard, and still have the right to enjoy the backyard. That's what you have to do with your zoning laws. And so you've got to be a buffer, and a buffer's got to be continuous, it's got to fucking sound, it's got to fucking sight, it's got to fucking odor. And I proffer that I don't know how the extent of the landscaping buffer, because it's not shown in the plans, why we look at, and a six-foot vinyl fence, okay? So clearly, when you look at the C two criteria, does it, the benefits outweigh the burdens, I would say just the opposite, the burdens clearly outweigh the negative. And that's why the people are here tonight, that's why they're concerned. And let's see, they know that they have to put a vacuum, actually, restaurant, it's a restaurant, it's a dinner. It's not just people who are only sensitive to this. So that's why they're here, that's why they're concerned. That's why there's a need for the C two criteria.
How about with regard to the C two criteria, you were testifying for that, that many of the shawans used to call it, in fact, commercial use.
Oh, yeah, and I certainly agree, that they're right. There is the applicant, there is a residential use, a residential property, a residential zone, evaluated. I think the R. Panos, R. Parkland, has residences using that property to re-direct the backyard, even though it may not be in a, a residential zone, there are residential uses, and the applicant will show, testify, as to the residential use, those people who were in that apartment, that they have any impact on it.
A lot of times, if you're usually, we would balance, what impact do we want to establish on this, uh, first, first of all, for example?
Well, balancing is, this board, as any board, has to weigh, what are the good things being done versus the potential negative thing that could take place? And you can't ignore what is taking place. Of course, taking place is an application, not this applicant, just want to put in papers. But at the same time, God, they've also got an application pending for negative restaurants. And I guess restaurants, if you look at all one, you'll see the number of tables and chairs set forth in that background. So if you ignore that, instead of looking, you've got to balance that, looking at a variance, and say, does that have a negative impact upon residential use? And is there anything the applicant can show you why that use, as a restaurant, over rise, and it's very bad, very use, which is a very bad use? And that's the balancing we've got to look at. And that's the balancing that they can look at, in determining whether it meets the criteria for variance relief. And again, the burdens on them, on my side, to show that. And if you don't meet that criteria, then the variance is not required.
Have you thought that the business unit, they have any, they don't have?
My opinion, they totally have not.
I don't think.
Um, anyone else?
Well, well, I don't think there's any questions.
Do you have anything else you want to present forward?
I'd like, no, I do not, I do counsel for international rights, of course, in that.
Well, I was going to get to that, but you have no other witnesses to report.
I do not.
Let me ask first.
Well, before, um, they wanted, pre-located upon questions, yes, and they want to question property, and I think this is a high season, Dr. Jem.
You want to do that now?
I would like to post a demonstration.
Well, I was going to have everyone come up first, as your witness, then, then allow you to do that. You want to do it now, it's fine.
Yeah, I think I prefer to roast them up. Well, so hot is fresh. All right, Mr. Jem.
No, no, no problem, Marshall, that's him. Um, Mr. Jem, I, I quote this sixty-eight Senate place, but I didn't get the power.
Ocean port.
Ocean port, thank you. Have you ever testified before this board before?
A number of years ago, I did, in the context of redevelopment application.
How many years is a number of years?
There's great hurdles, probably about ten years ago, and as a licensed planner here, in context of redevelopment.
I'm with, mine's gone.
Mine, I can't hold on.
Um, you familiar with the progress, or lack of progress, or redevelopment, maybe redevelopment, or followers over the last decades?
I, I'm objecting to speaking outside the scope of what is redevelopment, redevelopment actually, with this application.
I think cross, cross is a little broader than direct, and I, I get to test how, how much Mr. Jem has, I think he's been on the calls and he's talked with it, he's a planner, he gets to talk about, so I'm, I'm, yeah.
I appreciate that.
It's, I've been up since five, sir, I'm going out work. How about Mr. G?
Okay.
I don't have a marriage. I'll move on.
Go ahead.
Um, from a planning perspective, you certainly didn't like the, the six-foot vinyl fence, it's insufficient, my all.
No, I have a question, didn't like it. It's a question, do I think it needs a buffer requirement I set forth in the ordinance? And my answer is, right, I don't think it's sufficient.
Um, how about tens of the tall art devices?
We could go into a whole series of what it might be, and I guess the problem is, until I see how they're funded, if there's a landscaping plan, it's hard for me to just say in the abstract, what may be sufficient.
Here's what I, I can cross it for a half hour, but not on a few decades, ten fifteen, I know this board's getting a little weird. But the crux of the matter is, do you agree with me that your argument on the residential buffer amounts to eight feet on the rear property line that we're talking about? Now, that's what triggers your eight-foot, or your twenty-five-foot structure slash buffer mark, whether or not?
Let me be clear. It, it may not. And even if, even if it does, I would argue that it's still necessary, and that's twenty-five factors, but I just want to be clear, because that's why I wanted to make sure, right, that's why I wanted, that's why I wanted to be sure when I answered correctly. It says, it says in note seven, if a lot of us, a residential zone, or use, a minimum twenty-five for rear yard setbacks, how they work, let me go through the fashion plans. And if you look at the times, and I'm sorry, I can't, um, start with, you know, the residential property outline in yellow, is that right, sir?
That's lot eighteen.
Right, and to the jerk north of that, what lot is that?
Lot eighteen.
And what does it use the rear of?
It's commercial use, I'm not sure.
You know, that's, you know, that use to the rear's residential use?
This lot eight?
No, that, that's, that's a rear of.
This structure here?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know.
When I was speaking.
I don't know the owner's representative.
Yeah, well, I think, I think here, and that's what I'm thinking here, it doesn't just say residential zone, there's residential use, that's why I'd like the applicant to, of the objective to testify, as to where your property's in your use. Because, and I'm sorry, you brought it up, because I think we have to look at, well, what's different by Mr. Pogarty, is what are the uses around there that require a buffer? Because it's not just zones.
Look, do you know that's a garage?
No, I don't, I don't, that's why I want the applicant to speak. I, I don't want my clients to speak, I'm not sure, and we've talked with them about their residential uses.
All right, so let, so let me cross, yeah, let's say that's, let's say that's a garage, on a rental property.
That's correct.
So then that doesn't trigger your twenty-five-foot buffer.
If that is, if that is a non-residential use, that is correct.
So then, to you, going back to my prior question, that eight-foot commercial strip on an L-shaped lot is, is the eight-foot area that triggers your twenty-five-foot buffer and how?
Let me just try to look at that, please.
Please.
Can I see that part? And the answer is right now, yes.
So to skip the half hour across, the wrong thing about this eight-foot stretch, which is if I was two foot, five inches forward, be the length of mid, that would be the lack of the buffer, or lack of sufficient, or lack of material that would need the buffer that eight feet?
No, I think you have to look at, you have shown on your plans, a radius, where the buffer's required, that radius goes through about a quarter of the applicant's property, up to, including here with trees, which is impact.
Generated off that eight-foot.
Well, no, and where is generated? It goes through a substantial portion of the applicant's rear property, where two things are proposed. In number one, papers. In number two, separate application, tables and chairs.
Did you look at the backyard, am I trying to cross it?
No, I did not, sir.
Just let it up. What was that, Mr. G said? It is a Mr. G. Just go on. What, what was the elevation of the offending papers, if you know?
I don't know, sir.
Very ground level, right?
That's what I, that's what I do.
You're an intelligent planner, you know, very ground level, right, papers?
That I will accept your, your stipulation on the right.
So your objection is not really to the paper itself, it's to any use upon the paper, is it not, while you're here?
It's not, as a, as a planner, it's too tall. Come on.
Tell me what's offensive about, tell me what, what you, I shall, sir. Tell me what is offensive about the paper itself.
Because it is going to be some type of commercial use upon the paper. As a planner, as, as a planner, you can't just say, here is a structure, here's a warehouse, here is a office building, and I'm, and I'm going to ignore how that's used. So as a planner, you have to consider both the structure and its use. One, now, if you took away all those papers, and you put in all landscaping, so it couldn't be used, and a variance, but I can't ignore on the, to the, to the other. You have to look at both in context. Now, looking at both in context, you have the site, it's papers, and you're going to make an application, you have one, for restaurants, for tables and chairs back there, so you can't suffer a burden of trying and real harm.
Three quarters of this backyard would still be used in the event of a dump now of this application, correct?
Three quarters of the backyard could still be used without any for the buffer variance, or the structure variance, but if you take into account the fact that you don't have to put more tables and chairs out there, you will need a residential problem. Um.
You made reference to reviewing the eight-six thirteen meeting and transcript of Tula Panos, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you're aware that that transcript in that application is not part of this application, correct?
I understand that you made it clear that you're not here on behalf of Tula Panos, you're the property owner, just to put in a papers in the backyard.
That answer means yes, correct?
That answer means that's not part of your application.
You reviewed the application, you did not find a problem with any of the drains that was installed, correct? You're, you're not offering any affirmative critique of the drain, are you?
I'm an licensed engineer, so therefore, I'm going to avoid it.
Equally, you're not criticizing any proposed lighting, correct?
There was no lighting, I'm going to criticize.
Nothing further, thank you, sir, Mr. Jem.
I'll go to your board.
I have one further witness, I can know of course.
No, just, 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 hold on.
Just a clarification question.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Did you happen to have an opportunity, sir, to review the after the value, after the deal, or side more, after the ordinances?
No, sir, I did not.
So you're not able to speak to the fact that whether or not those ordinances don't require a, and a part of the variance is already part of the board, if you place them, the applicant force, it's not part of, uh, Mr. Black, you never speak to that?
No, sir.
If that were so, then the variance is, the party, uh, party, not the, uh?
Now, would it be correct, sir, I'd delight upon your engineer's letter?
I have, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jem. Let's open Trushy, down low.
Mr. Jem, would you like to sit?
No, I mean.
You're okay, I'll be pretty, I can give you that sheet.
Um, um, I'll do the, I can.
There's no others, you're on top of that.
Yeah, I can.
Mr. Jem, are you familiar with the Borough of Delmar?
Yeah.
Are you familiar with Main Street?
Yeah.
Are you familiar with the, uh, location of the subject application?
I'm sorry, counsel, I mentioned, did she identify her address?
Yes, yes, she identified her address.
They're usually, usually people give their address.
Uh, you just, what you said, maybe it was ping social with us, the dresser, president of the town. So basically, at the present time, do you not desire in the Borough of Delmar? But you are in fact familiar, uh, with the Borough of Delmar, and Main Street, in particular, and more specifically, the location, uh, of existing Tula Panos restaurant at the subject site.
Yeah.
Now, how, how would, how did you become aware of such a site, I mean, at what point in time of your life did I have Delmar?
I lived almost all of my life in Delmar.
Uh, and did you also, uh, during that period of time, were you associated with properties that were owned by your mom, on Main Street?
Yes, I actually lived there as well.
Okay. Now, if you recall, during the examination of Mr. Jem, uh, there were questions raised with regard to, uh, the the use of those properties which were located immediately to the east, north, and south of the subject property, in the rear area. Are you familiar with that area? Are you familiar with the buildings that surround that quadrant, so to say?
Most of them.
Okay. And can you describe the manner in which those properties are used, and if you have to step to the task table, to identify the law? Or you could just step to the bottom, naming them building by building, going from the, let's say, the, the, uh, southwesterly first block, going around the half circle of the superstore. Who's that?
Southwestern. It's so much easier when you're sitting over there than when you're standing up here. Um, I know the property to the left and to the right, and surrounding that property. So I will start with the property that I grew up, one thousand two hundred and twenty-two. And in that property, there is commercial use that is downstairs, and up above, there are residential units. In the rear, there is a residential unit, which is on the property line of the one thousand six building, even though there is a building that's in between us, because the one thousand two, which is our commercial building, and spread down to the rear, is adjacent to one thousand four, but one thousand four, and four, no problem.
Whatever's easier, I don't care.
Uh, the more I think about the understanding, the less I understand, it is good to do, especially once you step in the board, you stand.
I would be pretty surprised if you stepped on your board.
Yeah.
I don't have a, I can't do that for you. Um, this is the property that we're, this is, um, renters, how am I gonna stand on the case just because?
Punches.
This is the property that we're talking about, okay, this is, um, Van Heys. Okay, so this is the property that we're discussing this evening. Our property is right here. Now, it runs the length, all the way to the rear. We are on the property line in this section in the rear. This building is in between us. These buildings are connected, as far as I know, wall by wall. There are little portions of it that are an alleyway. This building has two retail, right next door, two retail spaces in the rear. It has a residential unit. Their backyard with their bike and their rake is right there. We have a residential, residential unit right back here. You walk up the steps, you can clearly see and view every single thing that is in this yard and in this yard, because that's how close they are. If they were eating chicken, I would be able to smell it walking up the stairs. The corner property is commercial on the bottom, and it has residential units on top. This building here, which is on the property line with the property in question, this also is commercial on the bottom, and has residential units. That, as far as I know, you see when I was little, they were, you could enter one of them from the alleyway, because it's the jewelry store, and then there's an alleyway, and in between the jewelry store and the music store, you would walk up that alleyway, and one of them, from what I remember, you could enter that way. But the other one, you have to enter from the rear. Those people here, there's two of them, have a desk and golden cup. The music store, which is right here, also has a residential unit above it. Every single property along here has a residential unit above it, it's maybe one, possibly two, except for this piece, which is the art store, the beauty store, and if I remember, on the corner is Past Rowing Agency. The properties, this is, um, I believe this is Marvin Van Heys' property. And then this over here is Einhorn, it's the automatrist, this is a garage, this is, these are all residential. But every single person that orders this has a tenant or a family member living there. Do you want to stay on that?
No, one question. Are you kind of a daughter?
Sorry, my friend, yeah. He would remember.
No, he would remember.
No question, no question.
Mr. Jem, are you asking any of the witnesses? Okay, this is a little out of order, but if there's any public feel like to question any of the witnesses, if they have a Mr. Jem, please come forward.
May I say something?
No, no, this is question.
This is just, before we conclude, the chairman is going to provide all members of the public, if they have a statement to make, they can make it, and we can make that statement at times, if you like.
Correct, correct. No questions? All right, then we'll close that.
It's a comfortable chair, isn't it, Mr. Jem?
I mean, you broke it in.
Presentation, please put a presentation, Mr. Jem.
No, we're out.
Done, and I would like to bring in the engineer, who was previously sworn, just to address several things with regard to the, absolutely good. Any, are you more comfortable, or was I just come up there, I understand?
Right.
Okay. Um, I'm very pleased, who was previously sworn, correct? Presentation there for the record, please.
Sure, it's Joseph Venese, from the major consultant.
Okay, sir, and you were the author of the report that was previously marked as evidence as being, or PB one, correct?
That is correct.
Who referred to various times, during the course of the evenings, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Sir, are you familiar with the ordinances relative to outdoor dining, outdoor eating, and sidewalk cafes?
I'm in a bundle. Uh, yes, I am.
With regard to those ordinances, if an individual places that type of facility, and even though, again, it's not the full word at this point in time, but is an applicant required by placing additional tables, or seating for an outdoor dining, outdoor eating, or sidewalk cafe, required to press increased parking?
No, in accordance with ordinance section forty dash seven point thirty-two, point two, point three, point eight, parking is now required. Should be calculated for the parking requirement for applicants.
You've heard the best for the applicant with regard to the setback requirements. We agree with both the applicant and the objector that the setback requirement is a twenty-five foot setback, correct?
Correct.
The buffer, and that, the setback requirement is a setback from residential use indoors known, correct?
Correct.
That's the setback. How is the setback different from a buffer requirement?
The setback is from a structure, um, I believe Mr. Jem's statement will quickly before, but I believe he had indicated reference to a fence as a structure within that buffer area, or within the setback area. Fences are permitted accessory uses, so that therefore do not require the variance for fence.
Okay. With regard to the buffer requirement, that's a setback of twenty-five feet, correct?
Yes.
But that's from a, simply a residential zone, not a residential use?
Or use.
Or use?
Correct.
Okay, so both.
Yes.
So if there happens to be a residential property, or a commercial property, still have to provide a buffer for that?
It can be, it can be, that way.
Is that your interpretation of that?
Yes.
What are your concerns, Eddie, with regard to the buffer area proposed by the applicant, whose lies are concerns pending with regard to the setback requirements proposed by the applicant?
Well, the questioning, the wide question, my, whether it's pertaining to the use of that to the property, which is in a way to have a lonely buffer. Buffer speaks to adverse impacts, or, I mean, such as you always, when everybody goes sort of, like, not necessarily to know what you're, the property. The applicant, it's not yet shown, in that, or for the strength, how the management is proposed.
Is that about surgery?
Yes.
In regard to the applicant's testimony concerning lighting, what concerns him?
The main debate is later, it's possible that it may not be the problem, or went back to, without some detail, in, in comment.
Any other area, then, with regard to the drainage, you heard the applicant indicated that they would be willing to provide calculations to you, but with regard to drainage, I'm assuming, are there any other aspects of drainage that you would like to see, or have the applicant present to you?
I understand conceptually, but there are plenty to do, however, in case of the failure of our system, they have a sump pump, they're going to buy one, pumping out, but there will also be a overland flow, or a land sweep, that is what demonstrated, in the event that the power's out, then when it was working, we've all seen that, it would be, it would also be, as, as what that demonstrated.
Later in testimony, are there any other areas of concern to you referencing with regard to your report, or any additional areas?
Not with this, huh?
Would this be available for cross question?
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Nishin? Uh, reference was made earlier, and the question posed is concerning, uh, whether or not, uh, the parking requirements would have to be satisfied, as concerned simply with outdoor dining, and the response was that it would not, is that correct? Understand my question?
I'm not sure, if I can re-say.
Let me try to, simply, uh, i-if in fact, uh, outdoor dining is provided, one would not have to provide additional parking, satisfy parking requirements?
Per the, that's correct.
Okay. But having said that, if in fact, outdoor dining is provided, that would not excuse an applicant from having to satisfy both buffering, as well as setback requirements, would it?
That's also correct.
And the applicant would not be exiled from having to satisfy standards with regard to lighting as to its impact on surrounding areas.
That is correct.
Now, also, with regard to noise, would you agree with me, first of all, that the proposed buffering, uh, landscape, and plan is four and a half feet in width, correct?
Approximately.
Right. Would, would you agree with me that, in fact, plantings are alone, really do not in any way effectively block noise coming from the site?
I can't comment without seeing what's proposed.
Funny?
I can't comment in terms of not seeing what's proposed.
Well, to your knowledge, are plantings generally utilized as a noise buffer? As compared to, say, a noise barrier made up of some type of plywood or other types of materials?
There's permanent fence, that would also supplement that, so we'd have to see the full plan.
You'd have to see the full plan in the court.
Before we comment.
Okay, fine. Now, within your organization, do you in fact have individuals who serve as noise consultants or noise experts?
Not within my organization, per se.
Uh, are you qualified as a noise consultant or expert?
Uh, I am familiar with the regulations, the, uh, clean noise and smoke.
If you're familiar with how, after ten P M., uh, the permitted number of D V A's reduced to fifty, uh?
I would have to do that.
I understand. Were you, were you the author of this letter?
Yes, I was, I was, I referred to PB one.
I'm sorry, PB one, where?
Yes.
Do you feel that all of the comments which you addressed, I believe, is either one through eleven on pages three and four, were meritorious? Were they apparent, those comments were apparent in your mind?
Depends on the nature of the use, there's, there's, um, discussions to make.
But all, all of your comments, I believe, were addressed with the concept that the property would be utilized as a restaurant, is that right, sir?
My comments were seeking clarification as to intended use of the rear to the property, and were wanted as such. And that if proposed, I would like to have certain information. The applicant was indicated that at this time, they are only seeking approval to pay it, although, if outdoor scene was, was posted ahead, so that, besides, that were enumerated in my report.
Would you be concerned about the location of compressors or air conditioners, or the location of exhaust fans in restaurant uses?
These are, are associated with restaurant use.
Anywhere.
Shaker, any questions?
Uh, the engineer, I think, Mr. Obat's, uh?
Mr. Van Heys, question, the engineer's letter. Sure.
Thank you, sir. Hypothetically speaking, based on your expertise and your testimony here this evening with regard to buffers, if, assuming there were sixty people seated in an area the size of the rear of this property, on imperious materials such as papers, and the property was bounded by a six-foot vinyl fence, and whatever plantings could be installed in a four-foot bucket, with that fence, and those plantings contain the noise that could be generated by sixty people dining in an area, and retain that noise within that property in accordance with the municipal noise ordinance that exists in Delmar?
I'm gonna object to the form, because, Mr. Chairman, we have noise ordinances in place for some particular reason, if a business, any commercial business, be it a restaurant, a, or any other status, I might admit, ties to satisfactory municipal judge, twelve years representative, well-known, simple folk people, to the apartment, with all twelve votes, if noise ordinance in place, so, it's been taken years ago, and it, for all businesses, as well as his residents and mine, if that's the case.
Your question?
Sure.
Now, that, there may not be the case, but that would be active fact, this board has to determine now whether or not this area should be granted. In ordinance, we want the proposal, thus by this applicant, and it's this board's charge to determine if, in fact, the benefits outweigh the burden with regard to granting those variances, and one, affect his noise. So it is within the purview of this board, at this time, to consider whether or not, if there were sixty people, as has been applied, or applied for, for this use, that the buffer that's proposed, in lieu of the remaining buffer that should be on that property, in accordance with the ordinance, without any preference, if in fact, the proposal will contain the noise that could be generated for the proposed use. I think that's within the purview of the town, the municipal engineer to address. And not six months from now, if in fact, there is a noise problem, when I can say that already the police have denied the issuance of complaint because of noise generated from this particular parcel, because they said, you were- because they said the ordinance doesn't comply with the restaurant use, because it's been granted already. So that's already occurred within the past three weeks. So I believe that, in fact, there's some indication that the police do not intend to impose noise for this site, to begin with. And secondly, that it's, this, we've opened the door, again, for issues with regard to the municipal engineer expertise in noise, and I simply want to note if the proposed buffer of four feet and one inch, plus a six-foot fence, plus maybe whenever, or flips or whatever else, the applicant wishes to state, maybe planted there, will insulate the noise from sixty people on this property from me, to the other neighbors, the other residents that surround this property. Because we've already found that the ordinance is broader and applies not just because properties are situated in a residential zone, but they have residential use. And I believe that the engineer, based on his expertise, and he doesn't know, he may say so obviously, but he, in his experience, based on his knowledge, and his previously stated expertise in noise and familiarity, if he thinks that a four-foot, one-inch buffer with some combination of plantings and a six-foot fence would contain the noise from sixty diners, I'd like to hear his opinions.
The noise, uh, just.
It's not hypothetical.
Yeah, why do you come up with this instance, that might be a normal basis for detection, but I do have that O one references without reference to value, seating that appears to be consistent with what's before the board to consider, whether there's sixty seats in that area, to the extent that we're talking about buffer and, and the noise issues, if it's a fair question, if it's appropriate, my answer to the question should be. Any answers?
I would need testimony from the applicant's engineer. I think it would be incumbent upon them to provide that information to the board, uh, for the board to hear. Um, I'm not here to testify on their behalf, to explain, so. Uh, they would need to provide that information, uh, for the board, for their consideration. It all, it may be different at this time, whether it's six-foot, ten-foot, or whatever height, landscaping that's proposed. So I, I would need to know more information, to see what controls are in place, um, hours of operation, the location, I'd say, for those, thank you, for.
Based on your experience, you couldn't. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions now? Seeing now, we're going to close the questioning portion of the meeting, and we'll open this up for, um, public comment. Does anyone like to provide comment, comment, don't worry. Please step forward, draw your name and address.
Thank you, sir. I'm Morgan Van Heis, I'm a mic on, I own, I'm Mister Eight Feet. I'm the guy that has the property behind this, that touches and concerns this, and I dispute that eight feet. According to my survey, it's ten feet, and that's splitting hair. So, I, I, I'm really, I'm bothered by the, by applicants' experts making light of the fact that I'm only ten feet back there. I mean, I paid almost four hundred thousand dollars for that property, not quite. The municipal tax assessment wanted it to be five hundred thousand, it's not imagined. It's a summer home, but I have considerably, considerable sum of money invested in that property. And I come around, in our property, it bothers me for someone to say, well, the residential, there's not a residential use there, that's just ten feet of property. I'll tell you how important this is to me. My dad was taken, he's ninety-one, he's taken to the hospital emergency, an hour ago, I'm still sitting there. So I'm not, and I, I consider this very serious to me. My property spins around and touches this, and maybe that's what triggered the application for this board. I would argue, based on my survey, that I have ten feet across the back that's affected by surface runoff from those pavers in the back, because it comes across my property, the sheet feed of the water, and no one's offered any testimony as to what the situation is, and the, the burden falls on the applicant, if not six months from now. It should have been done now. There should have been tophol, before that was regraded, the township engineer should have been involved, the township inspector should have been involved, paver shouldn't have been put there before someone determined what the topography was of that lot, before it was disturbed, to determine whether this is in fact an improvement or not an improvement. And the expert to testify that it's an improvement, just because the downspouts or the gutters are fed into some system, a system underneath, doesn't convince me at one eye color that that's an improvement. It looks pretty. Mister Renner did a nice job. I enjoyed talking to him over the fence, when I thought all the approvals were, were done before it was all done, and my assumption is incorrect, that none of the approvals are right. And now here it is, we want a rubber stamp, something that was done, it should have been done right to the killing. Because the developer should have known better. That affects my property. The surface runoff affects my property. The potential for noise affects me. My house is only about a hundred and twenty feet from this. So don't make light of the fact that it's an L-shaped property, and my house doesn't sit right adjacent to the property. I have full use of what I invested in that piece of property coming around behind us. And I do not begrudge the applicant from having a successful business on Main Street. That is positive to me. But it doesn't mean that they, they can come in here and escape this issue of use so that you're supposed to separate that off from everything else in granting an approval. If you want to parse that after every application that comes before this board, good luck in the future, because that's what's happened here twice. It's surgically sectioned things off to go in for a little piece today, and a little piece tomorrow, and then we'll come back before the zoning officer and ask for permission for the tables. And I think the applicant's, um, landings expert quoted what this board said, you don't have jurisdiction over putting those tables out there, that's the game plan. You can circumvent this board's authority, or plant this down surgically, cutting this into little, nice, nice little shapes. Okay, so this time, we're just going for the, for the waiver. Next time, we'll come back, and then, when all this is done, and we've got the pavers in here for what knows use, for someone to walk in the backyard, nonsense. We all know that that testimony is not credible. I like Mister Renner, but he's not a credible witness. He testified he didn't know the use, but he signed off on the papers to put the dining in the back. Now that says they're going to be there for the last seating at nine-thirty at night. I'm going to sit in my house now, because they put this huge fan on the top room, that, I don't know for what. That thing, I, I spent a year getting, now my hearing is damaged. V A's going to fit me for hearing needs next, in that, uh, June. I can sit in my house and hear that damn, that blooming fan that's on the top of this restaurant now. I don't, I, you don't want me to open my windows? This part of it, as far as I'm concerned, that's the board's responsibility to do that. They, they've got this huge fan that runs now. I can't open the window, I can sit in my kitchen and hear that fan run, calling every hour of it's running. Somebody approved it. They should have slowed the blooming thing down, so I don't have to hear it. That's up there, I don't know how the people next door can stand it. Now, I've, I've got grandkids, babies. I went open the windows to the house, and they say, oh, I'm listening to that fan run. It, it really is bothersome to me.
You're right, sir.
That, that this is occurring, you smell the fact, and the applicant continues to argue, we're not going to deal with use, well, heaven forbid. I don't know how you can in the abstract approve pursuant to law variance requests, and not know what they're dealing with, in good conscience. So, this board may not deal with the placement of the tables, but you can impose conditions on the ground of variances. All you have to do to, is go back to the land use law and look at the myriad of conditions. You can impose conditions on that area. If you want to grant, uh, grant the applicant the waiver for the placement of the pavers, so long as the water deal does not continue to flow across my property. I can't tell you whether it's increased or not, but I'll tell you what, the water flows across that backyard in between, all the way down across the back of my yard now, and comes out between me and, uh, Andre Anderson. Comes right across the sidewalk and into the street. Sheet feed's right across there. And nobody gave any consideration before you had to have this hearing as to whether it affected me or not. Now, it may be that it's been approved, that nobody's demonstrated to the satisfaction of your engineer that anything's been approved. They tied together into some systems, the downspouts, I don't know where that emptied out before. Maybe it emptied on me, maybe it didn't. Maybe it's approved, maybe it's not. Nobody's demonstrated that. There is a, a tremendous vacuum here of data that you should have as the board away, before you even vote on this. That's why Mister Gazarovski objected to the, to the form of the notice as being defected. In my legal opinion, you don't have enough data presented to grant it. You, you, you're compelled to deny the, the variances. But I wouldn't, I have no objection to that restaurant being there. I have objections to sixty people sitting on the ground level, and another who knows how many sitting on the, on the, uh, deck that Mister Renner's already said, he's already agreed to include his tenants, except for ten feet. Forty, forty-foot deck? These people are going to look right over that fence. Six-foot fence does not, or, and even ten, fifteen feet are vitus. That's not going to begin to address the noise from the second level, the deck level. And you're not going to grant or deny those tables out back. What you're doing is giving them the means to use a foundation to go to the zoning officer. Who didn't even know, and put a stop to any of these issues? What happened between the time a year ago, when all this started, and we ended up in the board hearing? Last year, and now again? What happened with the inspection for recording this municipality? I asked you, if I went out and searched, how, how far and why are we going to allow people to do this? And then come along and, we'll grant the variance, and, and the documents that are submitted here on the face, yeah, were referred to pre-existing pavers. Pre-existing to what? If you go back to the application before approval, they're not pre-existing? So, I assert that this is a significant impact to me, and each of the homes adjacent to me, people are going to be out there at ten-thirty at night dining, clicking bottles, glasses, silverware, and then for, for the applicant to try to tell all of us and you that this has nothing to do with the use, that's for another day, and it's another, it's either one of the board's planning or zoning, that's nonsense, because they know very well, and have already submitted the application to the zoning officer, who I have argued before this board wants, that he has vested with Alton Fire's authority. Yet, by law, he should not have the authority to grant hours of operation, and that existing use anyway. Because it gives too much authority to that individual that should be vested in a board such as this to grant or deny two comparable entities without any public discourse or any review. The zoning officer simply says you can operate from nine-thirty in the morning to twelve o'clock at night, and the next door, guy who wants to do the same thing, you can operate until then, you'll have to close at five. That's why I'm saying that is incorrect. And my argument to you, and I appreciate you sitting with us all night, nobody wants to get out of here more than I right now. You do have, as in board, the ability to impose conditions. And I say, if you want to grant the variance for the drain and the pavers, do it under the condition that it not be used for dining or noise. If Mister, Mister Renner testified he wants the lights out there so he can walk around, fine. But I don't want sixty other people knowing about out there at ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night, somebody cleaning up, throwing whatever soda bottles, cans, and all that stuff on my kids who are trying to sleep. It's just not fair. And I think if you search your conscience, you wouldn't want to be in my position. And I do thank you for your indulgence and patience this evening, and I apologize for taking so much time. I do appreciate it.
Anyone else?
I'd like to share some things with you. My name is Christina Garcia, and I'm the owner and operator of Toulon, and I'm the owner of this issue. Mister Van Heis is very popular in this comment, and clearly has just made it very obvious to everyone that he doesn't have an issue with going on in the background, the drainage and everything. It's really with, with us and the outside dining, and I feel like that is one of the reasons. And I'd like to just make a couple other comments about things that I've been hearing through the phone conversation. I did file an application for outside dining, and I feel another title too. Really, I guess nobody has gotten, but that doesn't mean that it had to be approved. And it was not approved, and it's been said over and over again this evening that the application is pending, and it is not pending, it's been denied. I did not file an application for outside dining on an upper-level deck. I am under the intentions that will never, ever be able to use this area that will require extensive work, uh, elevators, fire, fire sprinklers, things like that, that will never be able to incur the cost of at this point in time, and for everything that we've just suffered and lost this past, uh, summer. Um, I'd also like to just say, uh, it's been said several times, um, that the ordinance, well, it's been said several times, we have to go for a parking variance if we want to do these things in the backyard. Um, I think Mister Kovats has been clear that that's not required. It's not required under the ordinance to go for anything to do with the parking, it's not part of outside dining. Somebody had said that on our, our website, that our hours of operation are eleven-thirty to eleven P M., whatever days of the week it can be. My website's been up since two thousand and eight, I haven't had a penny to change anything, so I haven't, I haven't adjusted anything, there's no outside dining on there, it doesn't say come join us for outside dining from eleven-thirty A M. to eleven P M. Obviously, there needs to be standards and guidelines if I ever were to anticipate on doing anything like that, I understand that. I also would like to comment on Patty's, um, presentation of all these, uh, different commercial properties next to Mister Renner's, um, and she's right, some of them are commercial properties that have residential use upstairs. I would also like to add to it that her mother's property is commercial use, with residential use right upstairs, and right underneath it is outside dining. The same with Ramichio's, used to be residential, outside dining. I believe state old, outside dining, residential right above. It's obviously been made clear that the board doesn't have jurisdiction over the outside dining, and I, I can respect these people, these neighboring people, I can, I can respect that you're upset. But just because you're upset doesn't mean that you come and fight against Mister Renner's application on, on something totally different. It's two separate things. We're here for the application for Mister Renner, everybody has come out tonight for that. It's not to discuss the outside dining, that's not what we're here for. We weren't here for that last time either. Think has been made very clear at several points in time. I'd also like to, um, make a comment to Mister Van Heis about the exhaust fan. That exhaust fan's only been running since October, because I lost three months of business, and before that, a restaurant ran at one zero zero two Main Street, Miss, uh, Mrs. Delacour's property, that exhaust, there's two exhaust fans on top of that roof that run constantly. They're probably not to code, they're grandfathered in, so I'm sure he could open up his window and hear that too, because George's restaurant ran in that location for years. Right next door there is Nicchio's, right next door is Nicchio's Kaias. So if you're on Main Street, you can open up your window and hear an exhaust fan anywhere around there. And I just wanted to pretty much, you know, give a little bit of feedback on that, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
I think, um, intent is clear here, and I think that it's not, uh, I think that it's captured by the board. You don't spend forty thousand dollars on approvals because you have, you don't have petrification. There must be another reason. That reason is eventually they're going to go for outside dining. If that's the case, we're in the, the garden. I think the board of health will have something to say about that, and that's something that you can consider. If you can't store it inside the building, you know, sort of next to the tables outside, just, um...